Good evening, everyone. It's 6:30, and I'd like to call this February 15, 2024 Semamish Planning Commission meeting to order. First, we'll do roll call. Ajay Shakupani.
Here.
John Bachman.
Here.
Mark Bachman has excused absence. Hisham Ekwahab.
Here.
Sayed Safaani.
Here.
And Sudhini Sukkara.
Here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Good. And I'm Mike Briscoe, and I'm here. Okay, so first, on the agenda is approval of this evening's agenda. Any suggested changes? Seeing none, we'll consider the agenda approved by common consent, and then approval of minutes from February 1, 2024. Any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll consider those approved by common consent. Next, we have public comments for non-agenda topics. There is an explanation of how to make public comments. You can find that by searching Semamish Civic Web and upcoming meetings. Just a reminder, the public comments are for three minutes or seven minutes if you're representing an organization. And also a reminder that this meeting's agenda covers town center planning or plan and code development and transfer development rights program update. So if you have comments other than those, please, is anybody here? Okay, Kerry, would you like to go first?
Good evening, commissioners and staff. I had the pleasure of attending the YMCA breakfast this past Tuesday morning, and I appreciate the board, which includes Commissioner Briscoe, YMCA staff, and partners for creating an event that was incredibly inspiring. I don't currently have a membership at the Y, but I've been there a few times recently, and wow, it's quite a bustling place. I asked some of the attendees who were members if there was ever gridlock getting in and out of the building, and they said no, likely because people are coming and going, and that activity is staggered over the course of the whole day, which on weekdays looks like 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. I also watched an inspiring segment on the news this week about a neighborhood in Tempe, Arizona called Cul-de-sac. It has no resident parking. It's near transit, has open spaces, lots of amenities, including a gym and small businesses on site. They're giving a free e-bike away to the first 200 residents, and all residents will get a discount on rates for ride shares. To me, these examples help demonstrate that creating community hubs or centers don't have to be associated with congestion or gridlock necessarily. Therefore, I'm looking forward to hearing more about the proposed code amendment review this evening. Before I finish, I'd like to put a thought out there. We often hear from Paul Stickney that we haven't fully studied internal needs for Semamish residents over their cycle of life. I've been watching city council meetings consistently since mid-2020, and I vividly recall the meetings discussing the current growth target, where I believe it was initially zero, then 700, and then 2100. As you begin this evening, I want to throw a thought out there. Perhaps we should revisit a more appropriate growth target for the upcoming cycle to relieve any mathematical tension we find ourselves in, so the right solution can be properly penciled out. Thank you for your time, and have a good meeting.
Okay, thank you. And Evan, is there anybody online?
Yep, I have one hand raised. Mr. Stickney, I'm going to go ahead and promote you to panelist.
Paul Stickney here. My non-agenda comment tonight is about asking the city to replace the 2019 City Council Semamish Homegrown version in that ordinance with the Planning Commission version from September of 2018. In support of that, I'm going to mix a short discussion of four of the themes from the PC version, talk about the sound of silence in Semamish, a 1969 quote from Mr. Rogers, and a close. So here are four themes paraphrased in the 2018 Semamish Homegrown by the PC. For this comp plan was to update the plan based on regional growth and internal housing needs, current and future. Also, that base housing that was added should be based on clear and compelling needs and public benefit, to increase production of condominiums and multifamily, and to focus increased housing mostly in centers and less in single-family homes. What has the sound of silence been in Semamish? It's not fairly addressing what the community needs and wants truly are, comparing consequences of meeting those needs or not, getting informed, public input on those consequences, and then setting legislative numbers on what's the right housing mix for our city for lifetime and legacy housing. Mr. Rogers had a quote somebody recently sent me from a 1969 Senate hearing when he was going for public TV funding. He was asked some questions, but he talked about what he tells kids when they plan something that they know is wrong. And he said, "Just stop, 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 and plan something else instead. And what a good feeling it is to feel like this and become what we can our best." Cogent closing, Apple TV has a show for all mankind. It's an alternate reality about the political will when Russians got to the moon first, and the USA took their space program way beyond where it is today. Let's apply political will to optimal housing supplies in Semamish, get the right-sized housing mix for our internal community, take our community far further than we could have been had we started this back in 2019, and improve ourselves and become richer financially, quality of life, and social fabric. I call it for all Semamish.
Thank you, Paul. Your timing was just impeccable, down to the second. Evan, is there anybody else?
No more comments.
Okay. So next, we'll move to new business, starting with Town Center Plan and Development Code amendments. Kelly, I understand that you're going to give the introduction.
Yes, thank you for that. My name is Kelly Hildy. I am the Deputy Director of Community Development. Joining me tonight is Steve Cecil with Framework. I also would like to introduce our staff who are also working on this project, our internal team, starting with David Pyle, our director, Miriam Leitner, our Planning Manager, and Evan Fisher, Senior Management Analyst. Tonight, you will receive a presentation with an overview of the project's scope, priorities and timeline, the status of completed and planned housing in the town center, affordability goals and tools, and observations on commercial development, parks and open space, transportation, and infrastructure. Tonight's presentation on the Town Center Plan and Development Code amendments, as well as the presentation that follows, the Transfer Development Rights Program, both are hefty projects, and there's going to be a lot of information presented tonight. So I invite the commission, if we don't get to all of the questions, or there's lingering questions after both of these presentations, please do not hesitate to reach out to myself or to David, Miriam, or Evan. We are all here to support this work. And with that, I am going to pass this presentation over to Steve, who will take it from here.
Thanks. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here, and we'll try that screen, and we'll try that. And start at the beginning. Very good. Can you hear me okay? Is this, this sounds good? So we're going to discuss a really important initiative for the town center that focuses on certain important topics that we will explain, that will end up resulting in some proposed, and we hope approved, amendments to the Town Center Plan, which is the guidance sub-area plan for the town center, and related code amendments. As you know, there's a whole section of the Unified Code of Development that just focuses on the town center. We'll describe what the process is and the reasons behind this at the beginning of the presentation, and then we'll pause for a minute. We've talked about the process and see if we've been clear, if you've got questions or thoughts about that. But then we're going to focus on existing conditions and some of the opportunities and some of the challenges that we know we'll be working with and dealing with as we put this together over the next few months. So that's the kind of structure. And with that, I'm going to use the arrows here, because it won't just roll through tons of slides. So as far as that goes, the, I will say that at the end of this presentation, one of the key points that we'll be making is that there are some really important trade-offs and choices that need to be made, and we are going to need guidance from you and guidance from council, and of course, the guidance that we're getting from Kelly and the staff all along the way through the process that is establishing the priorities. So the Town Center Subarea is shown on this map from the original plan, which was adopted back in 2008. There were some minor adjustments to it, I think it was in 2020, but it's really the original plan that is what we're taking a look at. It calls for reevaluating development caps. As you know, there are caps on certain types of development, housing, et cetera. When a third of the residential and commercial capacity get reached, it's time to check and see where things are. Well, that's about where we are in the plans that are being reviewed and approved and headed towards implementation. Now, an important part of the timing here is amending the Town Center Plan as a sub-area plan, which is part of the planning structure in the state. But to do that within the overall umbrella of the comprehensive plan update and do this in parallel, so that the timing of the processes should, and we're working hard to make sure that they work out, and I'll emphasize that in that regard, it's been helpful that Framework has been working on the comprehensive plan update as well, so we can keep those in parallel pretty well. The planning area itself is the same boundary that we're working at, looking at at this point, as is in the zoning, as is in the plan, and it's shown on the screen, this area that is brackets, 228th and 4th, the four quadrants that are kind of thought about and discussed in the terminology. The plan on the right is an aerial photograph as recent as we could get, but what we've done is added the footprints of the projects that have been going through the review and approval process. So our existing assumption is those that have been advanced and appear to be moving ahead, we're going to consider those along with what's there today. So it's not a blank slate. That's the amount of development that will start to emerge in the coming years. From there, and I've explained a little bit about what those building footprints are about, and we recognize that they may change, that the projects are in different stages of planning, design, review, and approval, but it's a pretty good starting point. So from, in the past, the Town Center Planning really began in earnest back in 2004, so it's 20 years that this has been being envisioned and worked on. There was an environmental impact study that looked at the entire development opportunities in terms of several different alternatives or options, more residential, more commercial, various kinds of options, and the final EIS that was completed melded three options together to come up with the, a measurement of what the caps and the overall goals that are in the code would result in. So the Development Code then followed the whole chapter 2107, and a town infrastructure plan is part of our background. But as we're looking at the current context, the comprehensive plan update underway, and a really great tool, which is the Housing Diversification Toolkit that the city staff, DCD staff has prepared, that looks at the kind of tools that are available and could be used to increase the housing diversity and affordability in Semamish over time. So looking at that context, there are three pieces that we're working on to add and refine and enhance the work that's been done in the past. So there will be plan amendments for the Town Center Plan itself. There will be amendments to the code in a supplemental EIS. So to the degree that there are some changed assumptions, we need to make sure that they are adequately addressed and bring that up to speed, which does not mean a whole new SEPA EIS process, but we need to supplement that to make sure that things are up to date. So if we look at the Town Center Plan Amendment itself, the real focus of this, and it's coming out of, among other efforts, the comprehensive plan update, is a focus on increasing affordable and diversity housing production, diverse housing production within the town center without increasing the ads of right densities. And as you may know, the affordable housing is largely delivered here through a bonus, incentive bonus process. But we need to calibrate the affordability incentives through feasibility evaluations. Will they actually be used? Are they excessive? Are they, if they're not used, you haven't created the kinds of housing opportunities that you're trying to do. So we have an economics consulting team onboard with us as part of our overall team, Kidder Matthews, to work with us on that, and we have TSI, the transportation folks who are working on the citywide transportation planning, to help us adjust and recalibrate the transportation elements particularly. We will be establishing the basis for new development standards. In other words, development standards have to be based on a plan and a coherent relationship in the basis for new street standards. The street standards are different in different documents in the city, and it's very confusing when you're trying to figure out what should be happening in the town center. The Development Code Amendment will then adapt the code and the applicable regulations to any of the Town Center Plan updates, but importantly, a goal here is to improve and streamline a review process that is very complicated and clarify what the existing requirements actually are. So there can be reduction in interpretation needs and a simpler process to work with. So the SEPA requirement to have a supplemental EIS will have updating of basic information, because things have changed, but it's a really good method to measure benefits and to mitigate potential impacts. That's where you capture that. So when you have that planned, it's called a Planned Action EIS. It's not for a project. It's, this is a municipal action that's underway, and there is a Planned Action Ordinance that comes along with it that the city council will eventually adopt that lines all of those things up. So this is a one-year process, a four-stage process. We are in the middle of the first stage, which is really confirming the priorities as well as confirming the facts. We're doing an audit of existing conditions and how the code has worked in the past, and, and part of the conversation today is to make sure that we're focusing on the right priorities, that we don't get to the end of the process and it turns out we should have been doing something else. Then the second stage is a matter of identifying options. What are the different ways that those goals could be met, the priorities can be met, and what are the implications of those alternatives? Those will probably become alternatives within the SEPA document, they may, but more importantly, it's a way of looking at the balances of benefits and risks from a community standpoint to chart the path forward. Once that's done and we have a clear direction, then there is a lot of technical work and a lot of review work and a lot of meetings and hearings back and forth, looking at all of those draft documents so that we can reach a point by the end of the year, we hope, to reach review and approval of each one of these three components. So there is a meeting schedule that's shown on the screen here, and here we are, February 15, so far on schedule, and in a couple, few weeks, we're going to be meeting with city council and briefing them. And then in sync, in sync with each one of those four stages or phases, we will be meeting and talking with you, talking with city council, keeping that together, and eventually, after you make your recommendations, it will be presented to the city council for decision-making. The participation engagement is essential to any good planning process and is a key part of what we're working with. So there's an open house, which is an orientation and status report from our perspective, but importantly, we're looking to get information about priorities and people's thoughts about what we're up to with this whole process. It's going to be a very interesting session. There are a number of people who are involved in affordable housing, people who are involved in various development proposals moving ahead, that will be there with, at tables and ready to discuss their perspectives with, with everybody who comes. We're interviewing and making sure that the owners and developers who are part of the town center are being listened to and asked their thoughts right at the very beginning of this, and that will continue throughout the process. We're doing the same thing, of course, with city agencies. We think of the city agencies in a way of being stakeholders, too. Each of them has a role to play. There'll be website increments that are just focused on this and document links all along the way. So it's going to be a busy year. So anyway, that's what we're up to as an overall process, and we thought we'd just pause and see if you have any questions or for us or thoughts that you'd like to contribute.
Thank you, Chair. I have one specific question that I wanted to ask you. Thank you for the presentation, by the way. This is, this gives us a good framework to work with. In the supplemental EIS was, actually a two-part question. First part of the question is, did something force you to want to get into the supplemental EIS? And secondly, do we have an example of a successful supplemental EIS having been done in the past and that we can follow?
There are examples of supplemental EISs that have been done around the state for various processes. Jeff Arango, the principal that I'm working with on this project, has, has prepared one that worked out very well. The reason that you want to do a supplemental EIS has to do with the approval of the area plan and as an action item, action ordinance, that the environmental impacts are being properly assessed. Having said that, we need to really focus on those areas that are specific to the recommendations that are being made. There is many parts of the plan that are fundamentally sound, and many of the assumptions and conditions have not dramatically changed. The wetlands are in the same place and still there. But as we look at this, we're, we need to make sure that where there have been some changes, that it was addressed properly in the past, but we need to bring the conditions up to date. The most, traffic and transportation, the assumptions were 20 years or 15, whatever it has been, since that was done. We need to look at the recalibration of that with more, more of an eye to what current conditions are and projected conditions are. One of the things that's been really helpful, though, is that as we're taking a look at a process with priority for affordable housing, this, there's an opportunity here to potentially have a greater yield over time of total housing units than was thought in, in the code and in the plan in the past. But the good in who's is that there were, in the EIS back in 2007, there were options that had a lot more housing that were studied and the impacts were already studied. And I don't think we're imagining a scenario where we would exceed a housing goal that's greater than had already been studied, but we've got to make sure that, that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
And I will just add, I believe, and I'm going to look to David here, that we've had two EISs that we've completed as a city. I'm thinking Bluma, and then obviously the one for Town Center. We have not done a supplemental EIS, and a good example, a successful example of a supplemental EIS that has been completed for a town center is for the city of Mount Lake Terrace. And they completed theirs, I want to say, in 2020 on a plan that they updated to increase commercial and residential density, very similar scenario that we're looking at here. And their original Town Center Plan was adopted around the same time we adopted our plan. So it's, it's very, very similar process, a very similar scope of work, obviously different environmental impacts, but if you're looking to, you know, maybe do some further research, I would, I would point you to Mount Lake Terrace and their supplemental EIS.
Yeah, thank you so much, because when I first read in the agenda that we're going to talk about the supplemental EIS, one of the things I went to is to find out if there's something else, and Mount Lake Terrace was a point that came up. So that's great. There's one thing that is common between Mount Lake Terrace and here. We look at housing, we look at like, you know, increasing livable space and all of those things, and that's fantastic. I would like us to also consider, and this becomes a hot potato, it gets tossed around, to see how do we improve our response to making, to reducing greenhouse gases or other things when it comes to like having, and I know the city does not have like land that can, it can just throw out and say, set up your charging stations over here, and that's not how it works, and I totally get all of those things, but at least to give us some recommendations that we can be ahead of this situation for the future. When we get the, when we get the younger crowd, like the environmental study group which came up, environmental impact group which came up, and they get involved in it, they want to see that impact, they see that as a problem that is going to hit them first, and if we respond to that, even in a kind of a recommendation as part of the supplemental EIS, that'll be great. I understand completely that some of it is an unconventional thought, because again, I did not see any of those things in Mount Lake Terrace's, this one. Not to say that that's not the case, that's not right, but we could probably think outside the box and bring that in a little bit to give some guidance on this, and this may be an opportunity to get in and do that, and it has an environmental impact. So I would like us to consider that, if possible.
And I'll just say, a number of the policies, programs, or regulations that the city might wish to consider might want to extend beyond the limits of just the town center as well. So that would be something that we would want to take into account, will be focused on this area and the particular changes in programs and policies, but one of the things about greenhouse gases is it's, it's a big problem in a lot of areas, so.
Yes, I didn't mean to say that, you know, we're going to try to solve that in the supplemental EIS, but the supplemental EIS being the town center, if you could think of charging stations, if you think of other options that could be, become part of this as part of the town center supplemental, that could become a factor that could help with that. I'm not saying that we should try to solve that. Climate change is a much bigger problem than what a supplemental EIS can do. That's not the goal, but because we have a shot at a second shot on this thing, let's just use this opportunity to build that.
Understood.
Let's stay with the supplemental EIS.
Let's stay with the supplemental EIS, a couple of questions. You mentioned about the Plan Action EIS and Supplemental. Can you elaborate the difference between the two?
Yeah, a Planned Action EIS, and in this case Supplemental EIS, is about a municipal action like zoning, for example. The other kind of EIS, generic kind of EIS, that the State Environmental Act calls for are Project EIS.
No, I understand that. My question was about supplemental EIS versus Plan Action EIS.
Oh, it will be Planned Action Supplemental EIS. They're both, you couldn't have a supplemental EIS for a project, or you can have a supplemental EIS for a Planned Action. There are two flavors of EISs. And you can do the same thing with a supplemental EIS, but the rule is what you need to do for a Planned Action EIS is different from what an individual project.
You mentioned about you looking at different alternatives as a part of the supplemental EIS. Are these basically, you're looking at different land use changes and the transportation infrastructure changes? What are you going to be looking at as far as alternatives? Is that land use and a transportation basis that generates different possible option of the alternatives?
We don't know yet. That's one of the things that we are going to be looking at. What we're going to be trying to do with a particular focus on leveraging the Town Center area for increased yield of affordable housing, that's, and there may be different ways of doing that. So it's not clear that, what we're not doing is rejiggering the whole plan and new alternatives from that standpoint. So it's probably more limited in terms of what those alternatives are going to be. So what we're going to do over the next few months is really think about different tools, different ways that the city could achieve this. It's very practical. Then we'll take those and think about, is there a meaningful alternative, other than a no-action alternative, which you always do, to add to the EIS that would demonstrate differences in terms of impacts? But unless there was a significant shift in land use, and again, there were three alternatives with lots of different land uses and lots of different things, to look at all of that, it's probably going to be a more narrow set of alternatives.
But my understanding was that the basis, or one of the major justification for doing the supplemental EIS, because you increase in the square footage from 400,000 to 600,000, number of dwelling units going from 2,000 to 4,000. Are these going to be incorporated in the analysis and as far as development?
The thing about the original EIS is that those were areas that we're studying among those options. So they have already been evaluated. We need to just update those evaluations. There will be recognition, if the total area limits that are in the code, for example, are increased for some categories, that is still within the umbrella of the previous EIS. And that's part of why you do EISs, to look, oh, what if we were to do more? So we'll have to look carefully at that, but we will be thinking about it in terms of change conditions and the degree to which those were previously addressed already.
So the underlying assumption for the supplemental EIS is that using the revised figures as far as the number of square footage of commercial and residential?
Yeah, to the degree.
So you're no longer using 2,000 dwelling units, you're looking at 4,000. So the supplemental EIS is going to be based on 4,000 dwelling units?
Well, perhaps if that's the number, but as I said, it's a supplement for those changes, but if you had studied the alternatives in the previous EIS, you'd studied 4,000 housing units previous EIS, you will need to supplement it to point out that there are aspects of that alternative that you are now going to pursue, but you don't have to start over because the envelope was already really large in terms of what evaluations were done.
So is that given? I guess that is a question to the staff. The 4,000 numbers and the 600,000, is that more or less given as a basis for doing supplemental
That is, those are the numbers that city council has allowed us to study up to. What form that takes is still to be determined. So that is what we are working on right now. We're doing that background information, studying the existing conditions, working with our stakeholders, our planning commission, and our city council to really narrow down what the alternative or alternatives are. And at that point, that's going to allow us to study what those impacts are. So what would that road network look like? What would that transportation infrastructure look like beyond the Town Center? So right now, we're just working our way to getting to the alternatives and what, again, those numbers are, but we had to have a starting point with the city council, and that was to study up to what the maximum caps were already studied under the EIS, and that was 4,000 units and 600,000 square feet of commercial space. So, yeah.
Can I add one thing to that? Yeah, so David Pyle, sorry, I'm behind this awkward plexiglass over here. The one thing also to keep in mind is that the 4,000 unit cap is really intended to be an up to, as Kelly said. However, it's only up to when it's bundled with incentives to increase affordability. So I think that's a really important point here, is that we're not talking about increasing the capacity of Town Center for up to 4,000 unit by right density. We're talking about the 2,000 where we stand now, and there is already a 10% affordability component to that, but looking at how many additional market units are needed to also increase the number of affordable units being provided. And we might find that 4,000 is too many, that we don't need to do that, or that adding that many more market units really doesn't get us that many more affordable units. You know, it's a to-be-determined at this point in time. We need economists to study it. You know, we have professional staff at Framework that are helping us with this. Steve here has a lot of experience working on these types of projects, so we're really looking forward to learning about what the right blend is and if we actually need 4,000 units to provide that level of affordability.
Would that comment apply to the commercial as well? Going from 400,000 to 600,000?
Well, I think that the commercial also plays hand-in-hand with affordability because you need to find, we're not just looking at additional residential units as incentives, we are also looking at the potential to add some commercial space as an incentive. So we're looking at a broader package of incentives that's not just pairing, you know, one market rate or one affordable unit with five market rate units, for example. We also need to look at what other things like permitting or zoning, height setbacks, all the things that go along with the whole package that will make it work.
So if I'm understanding this correct, since we're running the comp plan at the same time, that doing the supplemental EIS is going to be basically chicken and egg, which one is going to go first? Is the EIS, is it going to wait till the comp plan as far as the land use and the transportation and all that is adopted and approved before the EIS starts? How is it going to work time-wise?
If I could jump in there, yeah, so the one thing to keep in mind is that they're interrelated, but the comp plan is not dependent on the Town Center EIS and the Town Center update. And we want to be really clear that our compliance with the Growth Management Act and our success in getting certification for our comprehensive plan is not dependent on this project moving forward. This is an add-on that we would really like to happen at the same time because it really makes sense to get out of '24 and have some, you know, some calm time when we're actually focusing on permitting and getting things built. But if we need to, we could decouple the Town Center work from the comp plan. The comp plan is a must-do, it's a must-have by the end of '24. The Town Center work is not. So, you know, we're making sure to keep, we've got a really aggressive schedule. You've seen how fast we've ramped this up already, and I'm really impressed with the work that Kelly and Steve and the team are doing, so I'll be quiet now.
No, the reason I asked that question, David, you and I, we had that conversation before, that subarea, and you brought up the issue that, because I said that, how many subareas we're going to have, and you said that, oh, Town Center is going to be subarea. And generally speaking, as you know, subarea development comes after the comp plan is approved. That's why I asked that question about the timing.
That's right. And it's important that the subarea plan has to be consistent with the more general comprehensive plan. The last thing you want to do is to have, adopt a comprehensive plan and find that you've just created a subarea plan that contradicts the overall plan. But by doing this at the same time, remembering that the overall approach in the comprehensive plan is more general, we'll be looking at it more specifically. But let's suppose that, well, again, the 4,000 number is like an outside horizon, there's no obligation to, that that's the right number. We're trying to find what's practical, what can be achieved, and by learning more about that, it will inform the comprehensive plan to some degree. So it makes kind of sense to do this simultaneously because the affordable housing is such an important town-wide, a citywide priority, rather, and this is an area where a lot of the growth may be channeled. They will inform each other before they get approved.
And part of our strategy of bringing another policy project forward in a year where we're doing a lot of policy work is that the Town Center to date has been very successful in delivering affordable housing. And with the new state mandate that we are going to need to address in our '24 comp plan, of providing certain levels of affordability and at a certain amount, we really do look to the Town Center as, hey, there is a subarea plan already existing, there are development regulations that exist today. And it, I don't want to say easier because this is not easy work, we're in a better place now to do amendments to the plan and code compared to if we were to start a whole new subarea, like say, for example, Inglewood, from the beginning. Subarea planning takes a long time. As you saw with Steve's timeline, it started in 2002, or sorry, 2004, and we really didn't get a plan adopted until 2008 and development regulations until 2011. So this is a great framework, it's a great starting point, and for us to really be proactive about building affordable housing, let's start where we have a program existing today. So that was part of the strategy of taking on this work this year along with the comp plan.
Question, question about, question about the infrastructure, the transportation network. Is that the footprint is more or less given? Where the streets, where the streets intersect and other streets? You mentioned about, you know, the street standard, that's totally different, that's the level of detail. I'm talking about the footprint of the roadways.
Well, I think that the, there were some aspirational drawings going back to the 2008 plan that showed connecting roads and streets in different locations. Some of those may not have been practical, there may be other locations, but the, what we are going to be doing, and part of it is just testing what happens if there are no more connecting roads, and if there are additional connecting roads, where should they be? And also, how traffic moves at further distances to and from Town Center in the context of how it's working today. So there's nothing, there are certain proposals to do some supplemental streets internally. Those are, we're taking those seriously, but in terms of roadways beyond that, there's a lot of unresolved questions yet.
And it's going to be a part of your work?
We are going to look at that, yes. And do some, we call it sensitivity analysis. If this happens, then this will happen. If this doesn't happen, then this is what will happen, as opposed to saying, there's going to be a street here. See, it's like that, so that you can understand the interplay between these things.
And also the function classification, which street is going to be collective, which street is going to be local, so forth.
Right, right. What does it connect to? Is it a signalized intersection? Not a signalized intersection would have worked, we're not a signalized intersection. What does that have to do with what the capacity is? And if these things aren't in balance, I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. If things aren't in balance, then you're going to have problems. So we have to understand what these trade-offs are. And traffic is, you know, a critical thing for everybody here.
And my last question, are you going to be asking the public at the February 28th some questions and what exactly what they like to see since last time that you solicited their opinion? What are you going to be asking?
So the strategy with the open house is really an opportunity for the community to learn about the project, so providing an overview of the scope of work and the timeline, and then inviting them to interact with the development community. So we have representatives from the development community who are working in the Town Center today, as well as different housing organizations, like for example, Arch, who is our, an extension of our housing staff, as I like to say. They will be there, learning from other projects. For example, what strategies worked, what strategies didn't work. And then at the end of that open house, we'll invite folks to participate in a survey. So, you know, from what they learned and from the conversations they had with all of these folks, what would you like to see as part of this work? Again, our goal is to build more affordable housing, more diverse housing. This is not an opportunity to re-change, like change the whole Town Center plan. We really do have a priority and a focus, and so we will be asking for feedback there. This is the only open house for the project. Again, we're on such a tight timeline, so we really will be promoting the planning commission meetings and the city council meetings, and for the public to come and provide their comments at those meetings. So we really want to utilize our legislative review and our presentations to solicit that feedback. On top of that, we are doing a ton of stakeholder engagement. Like I said, meeting with developers who are currently developing in the Town Center, current property owners, folks who have been interested in developing the Town Center, but there have been reasons why they couldn't pencil out a project. So, as well as our internal staff and some of the struggles they have when it comes to development review. That's really important when we're talking about streamlining our processes. We do have barriers in our code today that make that hard. And so we want to hear from all of these groups so that we can come back to our planning commission and city council with what those priorities are and those options and alternatives, so that we can start doing the environmental review and the revisions to the planning code.
Any other? Okay, John.
Kelly, in the agenda memo, you had three questions right on the screen. We've got the first one, so I'm assuming, Steve, there's going to be more, you're going to talk about the housing, and I'll just let you go on that and come back.
Exactly. We sort of thought we'd talk about the process, and then we're going to talk about the content. And then that leads to the two additional questions, which you've correctly predicted is on the last slide.
Good job, John. I know that Suda had her hand raised a little while ago, but I don't see it now. Would you like to?
I raised my hand again, thank you, Mike. Quick question. Thank you, Steve, for the presentation. So you did mention that you're going to look into some tools, you know, while you're doing this study. Can you give me an example of it? I was just trying to understand what kind of tools you're going to look into.
And that, again, we actually will talk about that in a couple of minutes, a little bit, but if you look at the toolkit that the city staff and the consultants have put together, it's really good. There's everything for different ways that you can incentivize affordable housing, but there's a whole world of direct providers of affordable housing, nonprofit development groups. There are different ways that you can generate the subsidies in addition to incentives. And as a municipality, you have certain capabilities to leverage financing, for example, or even leverage your own properties that are in and near the Town Center potentially. So it's a fairly long list of possibilities. What we're going to be trying to do is to figure out what is the best set of tools, and then structure those in, or at least allow for them to occur. Let's put it that way.
Gotcha.
We will be doing, those are all, that's just off the top of my head, maybe just a few.
No, that helps me, that helps me to understand what actual tools you're talking about. And my second question is, so it's going to be one-year project, this is?
Yeah.
From what you, okay. And how much is it going to cost us, you know, or is it free?
Oh.
I'll go ahead and answer that one. So city council has already approved the scope of work to complete this project. This has been added to the framework contract, as Steve mentioned. Framework is overseeing our comp plan update, so we amended that contract to include this work as well. And city council, I- And city council, I believe, approved the contract amendment for $436,000. So this is, this is not a small budget. And this is really comparable to any other subarea update. So we are, I think, again, very lucky to have the same consultant who's doing the comp plan do this work. Framework has been very involved with the town center for some time, so.
Definitely. I do have one question for you, Kelly. So when the Mount Lake Terrace people, when they did the supplemental EIS, I'm still learning, I'm new. Was that really beneficial or was that like, okay? Or are there any other lessons learned we could use?
So one of, I forgot to mention this. One of the big factors for them updating their plan was sound transit and the new transit station there at Mount Lake Terrace. And so that was a driver. So existing conditions had changed quite a bit or were planning to change quite a bit. So for them to prepare for that station, they really needed to look at the development around the station. So that meant looking at increasing commercial space and residential density. Think about it as like a TOD. Okay, now I forgot what a TOD is. Remind me, David.
That's okay. Don't worry.
Transit-oriented development.
Thank you. That slipped from my mind. We work in acronyms way too much. So transit-oriented development. So they were looking at a really big impact to their community, a really great impact to their community having this transit station. And they, they needed to modify their plan to fit with that. So that was a huge driver. And yeah, I would say it was definitely a benefit. We want to know what the environmental impacts are so we can prepare. And it's also part of the decision-making as well. And it really helps defend the work and the plan when you have studied everything within the environment that could be impacted from this policy work. So yes, I would say it was a benefit to their project and it's going to be a benefit to ours as well.
Awesome. I'm looking forward to seeing this in the future. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one quick question. Sorry. But if you go back, I think it was just one slide, and it had the dates for the various meetings, maybe it's two slides. The planning commission public hearing in September, December, the city council, I thought typically we had public hearings a little bit closer together. Can you explain just the thinking there?
Sure. Our goal with most of our policy work is to have that work go through the planning commission with your recommendation to the city council. And that, obviously, the recommendation happens through the public hearing process. We are, so from September 5th to December 3rd, that, so after the, sorry, after the September 5th meeting, we need to actually start preparing for city council. So we do need to notice commerce. There are some administrative processes that need to take place and we need to have time for that. Also, we will be scheduling in the whole process for the supplemental EIS, which is a parallel process to all of this. And I believe we're looking at issuing a final EIS in late September. So we want to have, I'm looking at, Steve, I think that's correct from our timeline.
I think it's actually a little later than that. The EIS has to be in place before council acts as part of their action. And the EIS has a two-step process of doing a draft supplemental. And then all the comments need to come in, the feedback from that. It'll be important for the planning commission to have in September the draft supplemental EIS. Then based on any refinements in the proposals, the proposed action itself, or any clarifications, we need time to bring that EIS. There's another thing that is in play here, too, which is the way that your council, I don't know if you understand this, it took me a while. It took me almost a day to figure all this out. But there's a staggered process where you meet on Thursdays, but the council meets on Tuesdays. So, and you meet, I think, two times a month, they meet three times a month. They have certain agenda items that they have to cover. And there are these holidays that we keep running into. So what happens is that you, there's a real choreography. But one of the things that you've seen here is there's a fair gap in there. That's contingency. That, something's come up. We need to have an extra meeting. We need to talk, whether that's with you or with them. And so we built that in towards the end. That's just in case, what if?
Yeah. So we do want to make sure we have plenty of time with the city council this fall. In addition to this work, obviously, they'll be reviewing the comp plan as recommended by the planning commission, as well as the critical areas ordinance update. And it's also a two-year budget that they will be deciding on this year as well. So again, we want to be able to build that buffer into the fall along with the other projects, which is why this will be going to them for a public hearing and hopefully adoption on December 3rd.
Just in the nick of time. Well, I'm glad you didn't have to show all of the choreography that was trying to be fit into this slide we can understand.
Well, I hope we were able to verbally explain that. It's very confusing.
The hands are moving.
But we have it all planned out. We have a beautiful spreadsheet.
Yeah, the spreadsheet is amazing.
I bet it is.
But I do, I want to have to say, we want this, because it's such an important issue to go on like that. But if worse comes to worse, this were to be delayed, it doesn't, the world doesn't blow up. The priority is to make sure that we get the comprehensive plan all wrapped up.
Sure.
And that we've anticipated enough about how these two will work together. So the comprehensive plan is well-informed.
Okay.
That's the key idea.
You may want to move on to the additional slides, so.
So, and a big part, you know, to your question, what's the first open house? A lot of this is about just bringing people up to speed. We take for granted, you all are deep in planning and Kelly and David and the team are working on projects. But people don't necessarily know what's going on. So we're going to make sure that we, everybody's got the same starting point and information. And the slide in front of you is just a list of the projects that have not been constructed but are in different phases of implementation, if you think about it. And so, well, some of them have been, though, obviously. The YMCA, as we heard earlier today, is more than up and running. But as we take a look at this, we are, we've been making sure that we understand the ensemble of what's on the table and being thoughtful about what is likely to be coming up in the future. So this is just a set to give people a sense. Because I understand there's not been, in a way, for this big plan and all this acreage out there, a lot of visible change in a way. But there will be. So in terms of the housing conditions overall, it's been pointed out, 2,000 units were allotted in the current zoning in the code for the town center area. After the current plan projects, those things that we talked about are done, there's still a balance of about 1,200 and almost 1,300 housing units that could still be built within the overall envelope of housing. And as we mentioned, the maximum of 4,000 was actually studied earlier. And that seems like an edge of all of this that makes sense to continue to have out there. As we take a look at that, and I think that last slide, it's interesting because you can see the proposed, what's coming online and the number of affordable units that are part of it. We also have the Aegis project coming in, which is a senior living facility, be the first of its kind in the town center. And as you think about units and housing units, the way that the code is set up, sleeping unit, these are called sleeping units, which, because they're, it's concrete housing with common meals and many other aspects of the facilities. So they're developed within the overall density and dimensional requirements, but those units, in this case, it will be about 94 sleeping units. Those will be considered in terms of the overall development potential, but don't work against that 2,000 cap that's in place. In terms of affordable housing, there were, the mechanism is a bonus pool of potential that developments can use in order to gain additional square footage. It's an incentive process. And the total bonus pool that could be drawn from was set at 344 units. Well, with the projects that are in place and are planned for completion in the not far distant future, that bonus pool will be completely used up. So there won't be any more available, people can't, oh, I'll build a bunch of affordable units as a way of making a really great development. So you're, you got to kind of take a very, very good look at that and see what, and how that should be reset and how the incentives might work. Now, within the larger context of planning in the state with the Growth Management Act and as that has worked down through the region, Puget Sound region and through King County, there are goals for each community in the region for how much housing you should be planning on absorbing over the next 20 years. And the number, the magic number for Simamish is 2,100 housing units over the next 20 years. Now, the way that the initial workup has been done, you also are responsible for pursuing a proportion of those as affordable housing units and having building types that are adaptable to affordable housing units. And right now, the overall goal would be to have all 2,100 units be affordable, which is not, I, we can say that that's maybe more theoretical than actually a practice, it may be a very impractical outcome. But it's our job to take a hard look at that and test that and understand what the implications are so that when the comprehensive plan gets reported back and needs to be approved, we're showing best efforts and why and how the 2,100 and how affordable units can be optimized pragmatically within the city of Simamish. That's what this study is going to be doing. So some of the priorities we've talked about is additional affordable housing. But some of this is about a diverse housing stock and increasing the housing production without changing the density for and as of right development process. So we're really leveraging what has already been envisioned as far as that goes. There, there are many different options. This is back to your question earlier. Many communities have been very successful with baseline requirements. Hey, a certain number of your housing units are just going to be affordable and that's the way it is. A 10% number is actually turned out in many markets, many places to be a good number. I've seen it happen where 15% is not achievable, so projects just don't happen. There's a magic area depending upon market conditions, but that, so picking that and whether that is something that should be done and persist. Density bonuses, we've talked about. But I think the idea of direct production of affordable housing. So rather than being a small percentage of a larger housing development, to have developments that have a very significant proportion. And nonprofit housing developers can be terrific at that. And one of the things that I've done a lot of work with are nonprofit housing developers whose projects include a bunch of market rate units. They're not restricted necessarily at all to have all of the units be affordable units. So, and that can help their bottom line and their ability to use the financing sources that are out there for them. The business and services is a priority for the community as a whole. We understand the community-serving retail is sought after by the residents. So that's why we're also taking a look and making sure that as we're leveraging your future development, leveraging and also making sure that you're drawing what can be supported from the market standpoint. So we're not just housing in that regard in this focus. Now, the zoning, we were going to be looking at the zoning and the subzoning structure in this area is immensely complicated. And as you take a look, affordable housing tends to occur where the unit cost, the per-unit cost is relatively low. Makes sense, right? Because you can offer them for less money. And the implication here is that the A zones are the zones that have the largest density and the largest opportunity. It can be extremely expensive and difficult and rare to have affordable townhouses. For example, they exist. There are ways that that can happen sometimes in conjunction with another project. But if you're trying to create a cost-effective affordable units, they tend to come with a larger building project. So when we're taking a look at the zoning, we need to be thinking about where and how the affordability is really going to be distributed and how that's going to affect the overall development. All right? And so that you have this process with the pool of available incentives and they can go into the different zones in different ways. The pool is depleted. Was that scheme really a practical scheme in the first place? We're going to be looking at that and rejiggering that to the extent that it makes sense within the overall framework that you have.
And actually, Steve, real quick, if we can stay on that slide. Just to reiterate, as part of this work, we are not changing the base zoning of the town center. And what we really are looking at, and I think this is a really great slide here, is the area between what is hatched out in red or gold or according to each one of those zones. It's the area above that white area and how you get to maximum density. So for example, in the A zone, the base density is 16 units per acre. But you can develop up to 40 units per acre if you utilize first the affordable housing bonus pool, which has been exhausted, so that's no longer available. And then TDRs would be the other way you can get to maximum density, which is what we'll be discussing next. And so that is how the system is in place today. So when we talk about incentives, we could be talking about an affordable housing bonus pool like we've had, what we have currently in our code. Our TDRs are something else. This is, this is the process we're looking at. So to get to a new maximum density, which could come out of this process, it would need to be tied to affordability. And that would be the only way a developer can get to that maximum. And again, that is to all be finessed through this whole project update.
Right. These equations and pools and arrows, and we'll be taking a look at all of that to see. And those, when we talk about choices for the, you know, options for the EIS, that may be where the options are. Well, you could put everything in the A zones and it would really work. But gee, then it's really going to concentrate it. Maybe you can transfer from an A zone to a B zone. Well, how would we do that? Well, is that better from an environmental standpoint or not? That's where that's going to come from. I think that when you're trying to develop a coherent place at this scale, the fact that you have relatively few land assemblies, imagine if there was a different owner on every single parcel in this area, it would be really, really challenging. So we, these are folks that we're aware of. There are single-family homes here, there are other parcels. But we do recognize that we have institutional participants here, property owners. We have the Lake Washington School District and the city of Simamish is a very important property owner. So we are thinking about how each one of these steps, not just in terms of the zones, but what some of the ownership approaches might, what the developers and owners might be doing in the future. But leveraging the city land ownership is a really interesting thing to think about. It's possible, imaginable, that the city could acquire more land or use the land to provide for affordable housing. It could take away to think about a combination of approaches that would contribute to other aspects of the development as well as a property player with a clear public interest that if it can find ways to maximize that, that's great. So thinking about the city as an active player in creating the different dimensions of a successful town center is something that we'll be thinking about and making sure that a plan can enable that. The city's not a passive player as the town center evolves. From a transportation infrastructure standpoint, there have been some, some big changes. Obviously, the reconfiguration improvements to Fourth Avenue have been accomplished. One thing that's really interesting, and this is true of a lot of the suburban areas that we've worked in over the years, traffic congestion has not been increasing in Simamish as much as you would have thought years ago when you looked at things. And there's a really interesting set of changes and behavioral adaptations. And there's a really interesting set of changes and behavioral adaptations that occur. And some of it has to do with the kinds of folks in Sammamish and the ability to work from home, having the technology and knowing how to use that properly, the ability to adjust people's, your schedule. So we work in one community where nobody went to work during rush hour anymore. What's the point? I stay at home for two hours and drive in when it's comfortable. And boy, that's been really happening in Sammamish. So your congestion is really fairly flat compared to what you would think. Now, there are some topics here, though, that, about the fact that unlike Mount Lake, and there's no transit, sound transit station coming, so options are relatively sparse. But the key, one of the key challenges is trying to figure out how to expand the connection points to the larger arterials as the area grows. And some of the roadways that were drawn in the original plan, for example, cut through some pretty impressive wetlands. And it's not at all clear that that particular, this is a diagram.
Yeah.
All have to remember is a diagram. But trying to figure out how those connections can evolve in a way that doesn't clog up the center is part of it. There are a limited number of routes, and there's a lot of cost in taking whole corridors leading in and out of Sammamish and upgrading them in terms of what their capacity would be. And the idea that the town center is going to, you know, carry the cost, one of the challenges of town centers is it's in the center. If it was at the edge, right next to an interstate, for example, hmm, it's a whole different problem. So that's one of the things that we're looking at, and I think it's great that our transportation consultants, TSI, are also working on the citywide transportation plan so that we can look at those together. But one thing I want to emphasize, this is really important to understand, that when you take a look at getting to the center, if you live here, it is fairly easy to get to, sort of. But from a retail and business standpoint, being in the center is actually isolated from where the heavier travel is and where those nodes are over Nesequar, Redmond, and the like. So there are some real challenges. It feels like the center, but in many communities, centers start to get built, be built at the edges for that very reason.
And just to add to this point, too, transportation infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, that's expensive. And so we really want to be thoughtful when we're looking at, for example, what we have here on the screen, where we're locating that infrastructure. So if we're looking at the Northwest Connector Road, that's a prime example. That goes right through a major wetland system, a ravine. If we were to build that, to permit it, that is very expensive. Is there a more logical location and connection to 228 that wouldn't require that level of impact? And so we want to keep, we want to be very mindful of infrastructure. You know, we hear this all the time, development pays for development. When development's paying for expensive development, guess who gets, that gets passed on, and that gets passed on to the homeowner or the businesses. So we want to be mindful of that. And then what, what is our responsibility as a city to help build the town center and to, again, meet our objective of getting more affordable housing? So all of these questions, policy questions are going to be coming to light here soon to be discussed. And I think, I think that leads to the next set of slides here.
Well, just, just want to make sure that in all of this, development standards are so extensive, the list of the possible forms and processes is huge. And if, that adds cost and time to the city and to the developers as well. So it's really, if you can streamline it, everybody wins. Everybody wins. And so that's what we're looking at. So this is, this is a sequence that just talks about fundamentally, when you are trying to leverage public benefits from private development, what are you doing and how does that work? And if you think about it, if there were no public requirements for benefits or other improvements for the, for the city, a developer may very well be, have a very feasible, imagine this as a balance, right? And if the market return on the investment can be achieved, and this is a very desirable place to be, and if you had no requirements, you could make a lot of money developing, and people have been figuring that out for a long time. Now, they have their own costs, and they vary over time. Finance costs, construction costs, development costs, other risks that are invited. But what you're doing when you say, okay, let's get some public benefits out of this, you're reducing that extra premium, the premium value, the extra profitability that comes from developing in a place like Sammamish, and you're taking some of that and having the developer take some of their portion of their future revenue to create affordable housing units and subsidizing them. We call them internal subsidies. You subsidize those units and if you want to get the development, but you've got to pay for that. That's the developer pays for it. Or off-site impact mitigations. We need a new intersection down the street because of what you're doing here. You need to pay for that. Well, okay, if you're going to have the developer pay for it, that's coming out of the premiums that they could get. And what can happen and happens a lot in communities setting up codes and programs is the list of things that get added gets bigger and bigger and bigger. We'd like to have some TDR payments. That would be great. Pay us some money for those open spaces. We'd like to have some public parks and amenities. Provide that. The off-site infrastructure, you've got to build that. We want to have affordable housing units. And a couple of things that happen, we're going to have a really complicated process that takes you years to get through. Now, what does that do? It increases the risk. What if I don't get that? And in time, and that's an opportunity cost. If I could go some other place and build something, and it's going to take me four years to do it here, guess what? So as you pile up, you can create a situation where development's actually just not feasible. And it looks good on paper because look at all the great things that you're going to get, but you're not going to get them because it's become unfeasible. And that's what we're trying to understand. So there are ways of changing that balance, and one of the ways that you can do it is to add density bonuses. That's what density bonuses are. We're saying, we're going to give you more profitable square footage. We're going to give you some of that good stuff, but you've got to turn around and give us some more of that stuff that we want. We want the, we want to have additional affordable units and off-site infrastructure, but we'll give you something that you wouldn't have otherwise. That's just trying to balance it. Now, will that make it feasible? That's what we're trying to understand. But there's one thing that I mentioned earlier. If you take off an extended process and if you take off of the scale, a risk, I don't know what will happen here. I can do, fill out all the forms. I don't know what's going to happen. You've lightened their load considerably. So that's sort of a no-brainer. Make it clear, make the public requirements clear, make the process reasonable, and it will tend to make things more feasible. But let's say you want to add a bunch of affordable housing units. Say, well, Rick, we hit 10%, but now we want 25%. Well, you can get, it can go right back down again. There's, it can become unfeasible. Just imagine, just how that balance would work. One thing you can do, and this is where the trade-off comes in, you can reduce the public benefit requirements for other aspects of a project. You can say, that TDR, we're not going to, we don't really want TDR payments. We really want more affordable housing. It contributes to the public parks is good, but building the whole thing, maybe not. Maybe that's shared. You're going to be able to mitigate what's going on, but maybe there's a way of financing it, for example, in a way that would have other pieces of the puzzle. So if you increase the affordable housing units that you're requiring and the costs associated with it, one of the moves that you can make is to reduce the public benefits that you're demanding in other categories. But the other thing that helps rebalance this is that the public sector is in, is in a position to contribute to development feasibility directly and in return for that, get more benefits such as affordable housing. So if there's some, some financing costs, doing public financing moves with infrastructure, affordable housing financing can sometimes be terrific for public entities that, that private entities can't do. Public investment in the area-wide infrastructure that will allow development to occur, all of those things rebalance again. So the point is, as you increase the amount of affordable housing, you've really got to think about the whole package of what other benefits the city is requiring and what can the city bring to the table in order to make that maximum. But our job is, in the end, is to study these options. If we put more on this side of the scale, how does it come out? If we put less on this side of the scale, we're going to develop a series of scenarios that will, will show you where your choices are, and then it'll be up to the city to decide where to go. So that's where your prediction about the last two questions comes in. It's, do you have any questions about these relationships, about all these different components? And what kind of information or analysis would help you in your deliberations and thinking about this in the future?
I heard the word affordable housing so many times. What's the definition of affordable housing?
Affordable housing is defined as housing that is less than the area, the costs that a median income person or household within the region would pay for housing. So if, if you look at what an average person, average median income is, they can afford to spend a certain percentage on housing. Affordable housing is housing that is made available to people who don't make that average. They're below the average median in terms of income.
So if I make it simpler, the school teachers and the nurses, will those be able to afford it?
Typically, that's right. So typically, you, there are different segments that get defined. Often, people still talk about 80%. The people who are at 80% of what the average income, there can be housing targeted to them. They can still spend money for housing, but not as much as an average income. But it can go down from there. There are different brackets, 60%, 40%, 20% that you think through. But one of the things that it's important to understand, the more subsidy, this eventually you're subsidizing that difference between the average, the more subsidy you provide for folks with very low income situations, the less you can provide for folks who are a little bit higher in the income brackets. So that's one of the things to be thought of, which is why it's easier to provide affordable housing for like 80% of what the median, because the median income within King County, within the region is pretty high.
That's why I use those two by name, because I know those are two of the groups that they struggle to find housing where they work.
That's right. And one of the things, one of the reasons why affordable housing is so important for communities is there are people who, who work here, who, it can be hard. I've heard a really good story about one of the stores here that's really having trouble finding people who will come and work here because it's such a long trip to get here and they have other jobs that they can get, and they can't afford to live here. It's not, it's not, not. So having places, the other thing that we do find, too, is I have a really good friend who's a real estate economist, who has done lots of studies to show that when you're providing housing, it's, it's the same people over the course of their lifetime. When you're a young adult, your income is low, you need to have affordable housing but might like to live in the same community as your friends or your family. But then when you have a family, your income situation changes again, but then later on, the kids are gone. Now you want to have housing, but you don't need the big rambling house anymore. So to have a healthy community for the people who are here, you need to have good choices for different points in their life cycle, right? And so that's another way of thinking about what affordability provides.
One of the things you also touched base on was the, the traffic and that it has been relatively flat during the past years. I think the more housing we add closer to 228, the more significant the impact would be along 228 because of all the schools that are there. If you drive along 228 between seven and eight in the morning, it's a gridlock, and the more you add housing to that area, the harder it will be. So it just needs to be studied. And getting in and out of Sammamish, I don't think it's that easy to expand those roads. It's, they are landlocked. If I look at Sahale on this end, or if I look at 43rd on the other end, it's not that easy to widen them.
I think it's a really good point, and Victor Solomon, in the, our traffic consultant, has really pointed out, how many communities have this many high schools this close to each other with the kind of school population? And we, we have a school population now where people drive their kids to and from school, and then the kids drive to and from school as well. So one of the things that we've been kicking around is maybe you need to manage the traffic around your, your schools a little bit, too. This is, this is something you could do to try to, because the peaks, peak hours now are really associated with the schools more than anything.
They are. Last question. For the town center development, what's the ownership structure between the city, the developer? Who owns the land? Who's going to be developing the land? How much does the city, how much say does the city have on what to be built there?
Actually, I think you had a slide that showed the ownership, the map.
Well, fundamentally, the, the control that the city has on the private property mostly, right, is through zoning and regulation. But it can be, because it can purchase land, it can sell land, it can, it has some land resources. The nearby is the Central Washington State University, which is a big parcel, and the city has some control and can be thinking about being a player. But mostly, this is through, the vast, vast, vast majority of this is through regulations. That's really how the control occurs. I think that's the easiest way.
Ajay, why don't you go?
So David is actually going to pass out, we have put together a matrix when it comes to defining affordability and what that looks like from an income level. And this is something that we definitely will continue to bring back to the commission as a reminder. But when we're talking about those different affordability levels, the 80%, 50% and beyond, and looking at what that income is, yes, it's definitely your service providers, your city staff, the folks that are checking you out at Safeway are serving you at a restaurant. It becomes very difficult to find housing in Sammamish when we talk about the service industry. And this was thoroughly discussed when we were working on the Housing Diversification Toolkit, which was the plan that was just adopted this last spring. And Miriam can also speak to that as well if there's any questions. But this is a great matrix to have. And again, we'll continue to provide that in our slide presentations as we move forward with this project as a reminder.
Ajay, do you mind if I follow up on that before you get on your question?
Yeah, please.
Can I follow up on that? Are we saying that affordability index in the city of Sammamish is the same as affordability index in the city of Tacula or in Renton or in Seattle or Lake Forest Park? The number stays the same?
It's, it's East King County. So there's a, there's a sub-area, it's HUD that determines the income. So if you see, there's some references on the bottom of the table there. That's where that data comes from, and this is something that's calculated using a formula that's for the east side.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ajay.
Oh, thank you. So the question that I, first of all, thank you so much, David, for this thing. This is fantastic. It's great. We talked a lot about the practical balance that you said, and if you go one slide back, you gave the you gave the balance between the TDRs and the, this one on the right-hand side. You said that if you do the TDRs versus building units and all of those things, how practical is that? I mean, theoretically, this is great. This makes a lot of sense here. But do we have builders who would look at Semamish, who would look at the demographics of Semamish, and would say, yes, I get this thing, I would like to contribute into this or work within this? Is there a good story of a success that is there associated with it? Or are we talking more theory than?
No, no. I think, I mean, we look at the projects and proposals. We talked about the fact that hundreds of affordable housing units are coming online in Semamish Town Centers by private sector developers who have been, are happy to provide those because they have the opportunity to do market rate units. The TDRs, the TDRs are fully spoken for the way they're allocated right now. We're going to hear about that in a few minutes. No, this is very real. The, it's a very desirable and a very valuable community, and people can make money developing, particularly housing, because it's a housing community predominantly, but other kinds of service uses as well. So that provides the, I think of it as the wind in the sails. There's wind blowing here, and if you put a sail up, you can sail here. If this was not a desirable place to build, if there was no demand, then it would be entirely a theory. But the problem is to figure out how to maximize the community benefit without shutting down the development. So say, well, that's great, but you've loaded this up so much, and it really looks good on paper, but I'm going to Tukwala.
Got it, got it. The second thing, you'd said what kind of information that you need. You, in one of the previous slides farther from here, you talked about, and you also spoke about the fact that there are people who are, for lack of a better term, telecommuting. They're working from home.
Yes.
They're, in their, at home or near home, rather than going off to office and all of those things. There has been an uptick in the traffic that travels out of the city during peak hours in the last six months, six to 12 months, because now employers require people to come back and all of those things. So that has really picked up, and there is a reason for that. All the real estate that, commercial real estate that's there, which is causing all that pressure, and so that takes into account over here. Has this telecommute thing been factored that into place, or do we need to do some study on that to figure out how much does it affect Semamish as the neighborhood? And like Kelly mentioned, for it to be a living community and not a business community, how much does this impact, and how much does this work through? Has there been, is this tabulated to that, or do we need to do study to that, to confirm that?
I don't know that, we're not scoped to do that specifically. Lots of studies are underway in communities all over the country who are experiencing this. You know, it was the COVID era adaptation, but the technology changed, and it was changing anyway. So these trends, these trends were there before the COVID, but it accelerated things. Ben, to your point, it's moved back, it's moved back, and there's growth in the background. So there has to be sort of a reasonable process, which, there's good sources, but it's an interesting question. It would be really interesting to find out how people work. But there's a, the thing about it is that people adjust to the conditions. So they may be willing to put up with five more minutes of delay getting there toward their destination, but 10 minutes isn't okay. So you'll see it rise, and then it spreads out again. The other thing that's so strange is that people are willing to take longer time if they're in their own car and take a long route. They'll go really long routes because they're in their car, and they've got the music on or whatever, rather than wait at a traffic light. You know, it's really strange, but it's really true. People do this all the time. So there's a little bit of an art to this, and as we take a look at it, and it can't be straightforward projection, because people adjust.
Got it, got it. Yeah, and I totally understand that it's an art, because people would look at that, and I would, I actually qualify that time that they would spend, not in traffic, but at home, getting, leaving 15 minutes later than normal as quality time, that they would love to say, okay, I love to be here in Semamish, I can sleep in 10 minutes extra, because the traffic's not as bad as I wanted. So there is, there is a, there is a component of growth over there that we can work on. My last question in this is that, let us assume that we want to build all of these things, and we want to do this. And in your, in your schematics that you've done of the city and everything, we focused crime completely on 228, and this goes back to your question as well. We're completely focused on 228 and area around 228. Why is it that we talk about Semamish just within the area of 228? Why not spread it out a little more, especially for housing units? I'm not talking about town center. I completely understand that. This is the core of the city, I get those things. But I'm taking in terms of housing, in terms of mixed mode housing, or any of the concepts that you mentioned, why don't we look outside? Is there a reason why we focus so much on 228 today's diagrams? Or should I just take that as an example and not literally go to that?
I think as an example, I think when we study under the SEIS, the impacts and the potential impacts of different alternatives, we can't look at just 228. We need to look beyond 228 and some of the other routes off of the plateau where people may naturally go, because they know 228 is going to be congested. So I think this is all what will be studied under the SEIS, and as we start looking at those alternatives, so.
I think you may be asking, could housing be going in other places as well?
Yes.
And that's part of what the comprehensive plan is really looking at, is to say, if there are 2,100 housing units that the city is supposed to absorb, it doesn't need to all be, and won't be, it won't be all in the town center. And how do we look at some of the zones in other areas that have different access? Don't put all your eggs in one basket is a really good plan.
Got it, got it. Thank you so much. Thanks for your answers.
Okay, I'll try not to ramble too much. Just a couple of quick suggestions. David, thanks for handing out the Housing Action Plan resources, suggestion that you label the HUD areas east side. It might also be interesting to add that educational and economic attainment for just Semamish, I know that it kind of is off the scale, just as a baseline. The map you showed of the town center just sort of jogged my memory, kind of felt a little bit like the Bellevue Super Block issue. Not the same, but you've got few roads and a large area to try to move people around. Within the town center, of course, people can bike or walk, or transportation's easier. But as you pointed out, getting in and out of that area is pretty limited. If you know the back way in, you know.
Yeah. It's a really, really good analogy. That's a really good analogy, where you don't have, it's a limited number of roads and intersections right in the center and right at the edges.
Yeah.
And as growth occurs, unless you can create enough of those connections, it's not that it's impacting somebody two miles away, it's really the feasibility of doing things right in the center. And the development teams have been thinking about this, too, and it's a limitation that they have to be thinking about.
Yeah, and it's much different than Super Blocks, in that Super Blocks are designed in 50s and 60s for giant surface slots and cars, no pedestrians, anyway.
If I could make one correction. So I'm looking up the HUD information right now, because I wanted to make sure I was correct. It's a Seattle-Bellevue HUD metropolitan area, so that's the distinction. I don't know, there are other geographic areas that are called out, but just wanted to make sure that. It's defined on the HUD website, if you ever want to dive into that, feel free to reach out.
Yeah. Now, if we had our economic development manager on staff, they would know what Semamish's profile is. Question about the density pool, which you mentioned has already been depleted. It sounded like the TDR pool has also been depleted. Maybe you could explain the rationale for having limits on, or even having a density pool in the first place, and just allowing it to go to maximum density with appropriate offsets?
I think that's what we're definitely going to study. You know, over the last, how many years now, 13 years since the code's been adopted, there's a lot of lessons learned, and really understanding, you know, how we used the affordable housing bonus pool, how we used TDRs, what worked, what didn't work. When I get to TDRs next, we're going to talk about barriers, some serious barriers, and how that has impacted the development of town centers. So I think that is what this work is going to be contemplating. And to answer the question, you know, why the limits, I'm not sure why the limits. I think that was all done pre all of us. But what we really want to understand is, what did we learn from that, and how can we do better?
Thank you. And then last, I think we can all agree that state, county, SRC mandates for our, what is it, 2040, 2044 affordable housing growth targets, pretty audacious for this community. And we're in sort of this reactive mode to try to address that. So there's been discussion about different types of that in our housing toolkit. We have a broad range of different housing types, but not aimed at specific young or old, as Steve mentioned, lifecycle stuff. So my assumption is that with our Housing Diversity Toolkit and our goals around diversity and affordability, then it's the market's responsibility to address the changing demographics within a given community. Is that, would that be accurate?
Yeah, I think that just on a market rate basis, depending, developers can provide types of housing for different, and will. There's demand for empty nesters and demand for, the problem is that for people who, particularly young folks, who don't have a lot of resources, affording new housing of any type is tough. And there is a, there is a, I was thinking about this a lot today. In the past, new housing isn't what people of modest income, God, when I was starting out, I rented a, you know, a floor in an old house, and I didn't think anything of it. I thought it was great, and I could afford it. The trouble, and, but it's really, what we're trying to do with affordable housing through these state programs and all the rest of it, is to try to find a way to get new housing that's affordable for people. Because in Semamish, there's not a big supply of old multifamily housing.
Yeah.
So if you're in some community that has had multifamily housing in place for a century, there's a supply of housing where the mortgages, they probably never even had one, you know? And that gives you a kind of diversity. So over time, though, to have a balance of these different types of use work, and to be able to leverage the positive market to start filling in those slots over time, is going to really create a great difference for Semamish.
Yeah. And then last sort of question, comment, for us aging population, I'm looking at myself, trying to stay in the community, we have, I don't know, half a dozen or more aging community resources that are not in Semamish, but are right on our border. How does that fit into this whole mix, or is it? I mean, I understand that this room is the center of the universe for the city council, and that's, that's a truth. But for a resident living in Providence Point, it doesn't feel that different from living down the street from here, but it's in a different city. So that's sort of my question, comment.
Well, I think you find developers of those kind of facilities, people do have a sort of loyalty to the place, where their friends have been, where they may have grown up, families were here. But those boundaries are definitely flexible to a degree, as a market circumstance, and you're seeing that.
Thank you. I'll go next here. A couple of things, you jumped ahead.
Oh, no, we just stopped sharing the screen so we can see Miriam and, yeah.
Well, that's always a benefit.
Yes.
The, actually, what I was going to mention, the teeter-totter slides are super helpful in terms of the trade-offs. So one thing that would be helpful is definitions of all of the little boxes that were there. And I think that would, not just for us, but for the community, because that really gets into, you know, what it means to mitigate. And is that something I'm interested in doing in order to provide better balance on this? So, you know, that level of detail will be super helpful.
Right.
And, you know, along with the definitions, a little bit about the ease of implementation or the challenges, that sort of thing's going to be necessary. The other part, and those are all about housing and, you know, the incentives. I do wonder a little bit how the commercial side factors in. And I don't know quite exactly how to state this, but having a mix of incomes in town center, so that, you know, the commercial establishments can benefit from the wealth that's in town center. And I don't know, like, the details, but there must be some kind of trade-off there as well, which speaks perhaps to thinking, as we talked a little bit already, about more broadly, and how we have not all the eggs in one basket, but, and this gets to the comprehensive plan portion, so it's not just thinking only town center, but how do we disperse the lower or more affordable housing across Semamish? Benefits traffic, may benefit, you know, some of the commercial establishments we want in a couple of the sub-areas and so forth. So that's probably as complicated a question as you've seen it, but what you showed us was a ton of things related to trade-offs. So basically, what I was doing is, well, what about the commercial elements, the trade-offs? And then the trade-offs as we move out of town center? Because I think the right solution's actually going to think pretty systemically across, you know, the whole city.
Yeah, the commercial side is definitely on the table in looking at that. One frequent misunderstanding about this is that, that the new housing and the people there will be a significant market, provide significant support for new shops and restaurants. And believe it or not, this is not actually that much. I sort of, I was telling somebody, have you ever been to a town, someplace that has just 2,000 people in it? And how many stores and restaurants do they have? They're over the next town, right, where that's bigger, where it's more central. It generates some really important support, and is a draw for people to come there and live. But it will be successful if it draws on a much larger area. And in today's world, retail's tough, and tends to be driven, for many businesses, is driven by traffic, proximity to the dollars that are going by in cars. And office is a different world these days than it used to be, but there are other kinds of businesses for sure. I think that's really untapped and something to really think about, because if there's a way of attracting employment places here, oh, you don't have to commute very far at all. So I think it's, there are a lot of questions about it, but the premiums for, if you're trying to take those premiums, that there's special extra value, housing is the thing that distinguishes Semamish more than the commercial side.
Can I jump in and add on to that in response to a comment that?
Can I jump in and add on to that in response to a comment that Vice Chair Bresko had regarding, you know, spreading the housing out around the city? So as part of the comprehensive plan, we definitely are working on spreading it out around the city. And I just want to make sure we're all on the same page here that this is by no way the silver bullet to solve the city's housing requirements as part of the comp plan, that we have a compliance strategy that we are working on with the comp plan, that even if this project didn't go forward, we would still be able to achieve compliance. And it does largely do what you're saying and spread it around. I think this is sort of the, what do they say, the icing on the cake, if you will, that if we could pull this off, this would really allow us to start to actually see housing being built more, more quickly. And really, if we're, you know, we could go through a paper exercise and plan for housing and show where it's going to go in the city and show that we're meeting all of our required income brackets, that's, you know, not easy to do, but more easy to do. But we take this seriously. We want to, in earnest, actually see this stuff be built. So I think that's what we're doing here, is we're really trying to figure out what dials to turn and levers to move in order to see this stuff actually be built.
Yeah. Well, I think I understood that, but I thought it was important to bring that out because, you know, in a meeting like this, we're talking so much about town center and it's helpful to put in the context, David, just like you did, about there is this broader, and that that really is going to be reflected in a comprehensive plan. So those are comments that I had. Who would like to go?
I have a question.
Yeah.
You work in the other cities, you have developed similar plan for the other jurisdictions. Can you tell us a little bit about the some successes as far as TOD, transit oriented development? Can we use that as a tool to address the affordable housing?
Well, the challenge here is that you don't have a robust, robust transit.
Well, that's, I want to get into that because, as you probably know, staff knows that Sound Transit, in their wisdom, they took away $20 million that's set aside for a park and ride. So that was my next question maybe to Kelly, is that do we have some sites that we can possibly look at as far as a transit site that can work with the transit oriented development? And that site be used for the folks that they can leave their car and then some kind of shadow service all the way to City of Redmond to go to Seattle by light rail? I mean, kind of connecting all this TOD issue and transit oriented development and a site for park and ride to be in conjunction with it.
Yeah, I think that's definitely a discussion and it's one that we've been having internally with city staff as it relates to not only the park and ride or the Sound Transit park and ride, but a transit station. Where is that appropriate to be located? Is it in the town center? Is it out of the town center? So I think that will continue to be a discussion. I just don't have an answer at this time.
I looked at a bunch of, I did my research, look at some of these documents that was on site available. There were reference to the TOD, but I didn't see any, any reference as far as what is, how you're going to apply this TOD.
Yeah, absolutely. There's this, yeah, it's a very interesting reference in the town center plan that's, you know, that describes what transit oriented development is, but it doesn't define the town center as a TOD. And again, that is all dependent on the transit service or the frequency of, you know, bus service to the city. And so that's something that, again, as we're doing these amendments, we need to take a closer look at.
So Steve, back to your question that I asked you, do you know of any city that they have taken advantage of this as far as, at the same day, affordable housing?
I worked for many years, many, many years in the Boston region, greater Boston region. And the transit oriented development and what we call joint development, which means, and Sound Transit is doing some of this, planning this. The, the housing that has been built around transit stations on land that the transit authority owns is thousands and thousands and thousands of units and mixed use developments around the entire greater Boston region. And it was just smart. It was just plain smart because the, the regional transportation authority is making a ton of money there around the transit stations that they own, which is subsidizing the transit service, seriously subsidizing it. It's an amazing story. But what we've learned through that, and I've done transit oriented development planning all over the place, is the transit has to come first. You got to have the transit, right, in order to get the benefit. Once you've got transit in place, then, and we're seeing, boy, we're seeing it happen, well, along where the new, the rail stops are happening, you could just drive up and down the highway and see where these are, these are happening. And so it's happening here too, but you've got to have the transit in place first. And bus rapid transit is a real player in that. So in the city of Albany, New York, I did a whole zoning built around bus. It's one of the few cities with a really robust bus rapid transit network that is being expanded. So their transit oriented development is being targeted for where the bus hubs are. Makes sense. So, yeah. But the trick here for Sammamish is to try to figure out how to get the transit robust enough that it really becomes an advantage for the real estate nearby.
Well, a good example in this area, I don't know if you're familiar with it, is Ashway Park and Ride in City of Everett. And that started with basically park and ride, but gradually they made an agreement with the developer and now it's a big success story because there are a lot of retailers there and a lot of people living on the top and they, they go down to the park and ride, catch the bus, go to Seattle.
Exactly.
The, as you probably followed the news, as far as affordable housing, City of Kenmore took an initiative, but it didn't work out. Now, it was in a paper this morning that City of Redmond has taken over. What do you know about their, their success as far as City of Redmond approach in affordable housing?
I don't know very much.
We just know what was reported with Como News. I did read the article. I am not familiar of the whole story as it relates to Redmond. Yeah, that would be something we'd need to follow up on. I know Kenmore has been, the situation in Kenmore has been widely publicized. Again, we, I know, I personally have, I don't know much more than what has been discussed in the media regarding the Kenmore development. Both were, are working with Plymouth Development, who is an affordable housing provider. So, yeah, I don't have more to, to offer than what's already been published in the media.
Changing the subject, do we have building heights restrictions in the town center?
We do. It depends on the zone. We do have building height restrictions.
Are there some, when we're talking about bonus, is that something that you can work on as far as increasing?
So here's the way this, this works. This is a really interesting question. Generally speaking, the most economical way to build multifamily housing is now what's called five over two, five over three. And you see it all over the place, including the projects that are coming along in town center. And so you're allowed, you're allowed to do five stories of frame construction, you know, putting together those studs above a base if it's a non-combustible material, usually concrete or concrete and steel combination. And that works up to about five plus two, seven stories, maybe eight stories. As soon as you pop up above that, you become a high rise from a building code standpoint. And the cost of developing the housing skyrockets. So you don't see very many 10-story buildings being built anywhere because the developers can't make money at it. So there's a lid that isn't a height limit, it's an economic limit that's out there. If you get really taller, some of that reverses again. In other words, if you get up to, the rule of thumb for years has been 20 stories, you can do a 20-story tower and, boy, be pretty efficient. Below that, and I'm not, and we're not talking about 20-story towers in Sammamish. So, so what you see, that's a, quite a good package and there are many ways of putting it together. It's relatively good and it's got a kind of a nice scale. So that's really what big buildings are.
And a suggestion for the 28, I know that probably Kelly, you're going to say it's impossible. I've seen some rendering here and there. Is there any composite rendering of the whole thing so we go and show the public, they can see how these pieces together, they get, they were together? Do you have something like this that you can show, a 3D or some kind of rendering?
Yeah, there, there are in the town center plan. It's not, there may be one composite. It is, it's not the best, I'll say that. I think it could.
You're going to get a lot more reactions from the public because they can visually see how the whole thing is going to look like, even though that's conceptual.
Well, it's something we've talked a lot about and there are ways of putting together some hypotheticals, right? And drawings like that, we do it all the time. The, the consideration, though, is you're sort of imagining a future where there are a lot of different actors and their own approach to it. And it does tend, they do tend to, people tend to look and say, oh, look at this huge project. Well, it's not really a project, it's a kind of way of projecting. But to your point, I think we need some way of showing how this thing plays through over time. And you can visualize it because if you just look at the little chunks and that's all you get to see, the overall sense of how this comes together is, is lost. So we're working on that problem, trying to figure out a way to get to that.
You can write on the bottom, it's only conceptual.
I remember doing a project once and we decided to use translucent pink volumes to show what, and the newspaper said, do you realize they're planning on pink buildings all along the waterfront? So I don't know.
Before we go further, we're going to need to extend. And since we still have another agenda item, Kelly, like to you, do we need, well, we need another 30 minutes or more?
That would be a good goal, but I think reality, we're going to need about an hour for TDRs. If, and I say that as the worst case scenario because we also have public comment that follows.
Yeah, right. So we could extend for longer and finish before the endpoint.
Yeah.
So we don't have to do this again. Who wants to make a motion to extend?
So move.
Well, to when?
Till when?
Well, let's say 9:30.
Yeah, let's go 9:30.
Okay. Okay, motion?
Yes.
Yes, and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll extend it till hopefully less than 9:30. Actually, and then, did you have another comment?
Well, I thought that, I always have questions, but now because of the time.
Well, now that you have a whole hour.
And I, again, would like to remind the commission, I know this is a lot of information and we are planning on being back. If there are questions in the meantime, we are more than happy to set up some twos and threes and have, and answer those questions and then provide that feedback on the website so our community can also follow along for transparency.
And I would encourage us to take advantage of that because this is particularly complicated with all of the trade offs and for us to provide good, you know, input, it needs our understanding. Let me ask if, Suda, do you have any questions or comments?
Not so far.
Not so, okay. Anybody else before we go on to TDRs?
One more question.
Okay.
What is the total acreage of the town center?
Oh, I used to know this offhand. I want to say it's 240 acres.
240 acres. And Steve, one last question. One slide in the process. You had something says increasing off-ride density. What is off-ride density?
Oh, as a right distance. So essentially, if, if you were to own some land here and you want to develop it and say, I don't want any of those bonuses things, I don't want to have to fool around with all of these special requirements and going through the process, if I just wanted to just build a building, you can do that. You're allowed to build a building. And it has certain standard requirements that they often call base zoning. And that's the starting point. And people can do that and they may do that, particularly if the incentives are negative incentives. So the idea is that that's what you're, that's what you're leveraging is your basic approach. And then what happens is the, the development volume, think about it, the height, I'll use that. In order to fill out the box, you have to use incentives and start filling it up, but the box can only get so big. So that's the extra that you get. And what we're trying to judge is how much extra should people be allowed to get? I'll make up another way of looking at it. Let's suppose that you had an affordable housing requirement and somebody could develop 500 units and give you one affordable housing units. And you give them 500 more units to do, well, that's not, that's a really good deal. That's too good a deal, right? But if you say, you can develop one unit, but you have to give us 500 affordable units, that's a bad deal the other way. Then that's not going to happen. So we're trying to find the way to leverage that within what the profit, and, and I know extending, but there's a really important point about this and as a planning commission, it's understanding, this is not a project, this is over time. Interest rates spiked up last year, the amount of multifamily housing designed plummeted. There's housing being developed that had been planned and financed before these current spike and in, in interest rates went up. Well, the market will adjust over time. So you'll see there's a kind of a sporadic response that the market has to conditions that have nothing to do with what Sammamish can control. So you need to think, when we look at it, we may say, this could be four years, it could be 10 years, we don't know. But eventually, the market conditions will average out. So that's why we have to have a long horizon for these things. It's not going to be next year.
Actually, one last comment on that. Sorry, no. Just food for thought because, you know, like the bonus pool and all that was basically static. And so maybe at some point, and maybe this is something like every two years or three or four or five years, there's a kind of a reassessment, not as in-depth as this, but maybe make adjustments for how those incentives, you know, the blocks on the, whatever side you are on, the teeter totter, and to adjust those, to be able to keep those goals in mind.
Yeah.
And it's got to be tricky because of all the externalities, like interest rates and all that.
Well, the other thing that can happen with that, and that's the thing about having its limits, suppose that you're a developer and you see that all of the bonus units are used up and you're thinking, huh, I bet the city's going to replenish that pool. I'm not going to develop anything for a while, let's just wait and see what happens. So the market itself is responding to, you know, this gets back to your point, maybe it's a good thing. You just, and the first, the first people, we're going to hear about this, the first people in the pool have a circumstance that can affect the ability of other people, right? Because the pool's been used up. So the whole mechanism of the pool has these complexities to it that may make sense to, yes, reevaluate on a regular basis, but to do it in such a way that you're not actually getting unintended consequences.
I bet there are a lot of those all over this.
Oh, there is. There's so many lessons learned. And I think, again, there was such a great attempt with this town center plan when it was first adopted in the code. I mean, really great aspirations, but the reality of it, we did create barriers. And there was no way at the time when they were doing this work, they would have guessed that. But it was an outcome. And so this is a really, again, we have so many lessons learned that it will better inform us to, to do better with this next round.
All right. Well, with that, perhaps we should move on to TDRs?
And I am going to request, could we take a five-minute break? I do need to set up here and also we have been sitting for two hours and I think it might be good to stretch our legs.
That sounds like a great idea. So come back at, what, with that, 10 to 9? Okay.
We want to make it perfect. Well, good evening again. My name is Kelly Hildy and I am the Deputy Director of Community Development. I'm joined tonight with David Pyle, the Director of Community Development. Okay, so tonight I will be presenting an overview of the Transfer of Development Rights Program. Next slide. Or what we refer to as the TDR Program. And the phased approach to update the program in alignment with the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, the Town Center Plan and Development Code Amendments Project, which we just heard about tonight, and the Critical Areas Ordinance Update. A TDR Program, just to refresh everyone's memories, is a market-based mechanism that encourages the voluntary transfer of growth from places where a community would like to see less development, referred to as sending site areas, to places where a community would like to see more development, also referred to as. would like to see more development, also referred to as receiving sites. Owners of qualified sending sites can choose to separate some or all of their unused development rights from their property, and then sell them to a developer who can use them to increase density as a qualified receiving site. While the seller of the development rights still owns the land and can continue using it, a conservation easement is placed on the property that prevents further development. A TDR Program protects land with a public benefit, such as farmland, forested land, open space, and other environmental resources, while at the same time providing additional income to both the landowner and the holder of development rights. A TDR Program, TDR Programs are recognized and encouraged by the Washington State Growth Management Act, or GMA, as an innovative land use management technique that transfers development from areas a community wants to conserve to areas where growth should be encouraged, consistent with GMA goals. A TDR Program does not limit growth, rather, it allows communities to plan more effectively by directing that growth into areas most appropriate for it. In comprehensive plans and development regulations, communities can identify which areas are suitable to grow at higher intensities and how much additional development is desired. TDR Programs can be designed to accommodate the needs of each community. Jurisdictions can customize the elements of the program to reflect their conservation and development objectives. So who benefits from a TDR Program? Well, the landowner receives market-determined financial compensation for conserving their land while retaining ownership of their property. Developers are financially motivated to purchase TDRs as they are able to increase residential density or commercial square footage for a project. The public benefits from the program through a recorded conservation easements that preserve and protect urban forests, farmlands, open spaces, sensitive areas, and wildlife habitat corridors for future enjoyment. Today, there are 15 cities and four counties that have adopted TDR Programs, including Sammamish in our region. And with that, we're gonna dive into our existing conditions of our TDR Program. So I want to provide a little bit of background, because there is some history here. The policy framework for the city's TDR Program was first established through creation of the city's Town Center Plan, which was adopted in 2008. The plan identifies that allowing residential density transfers from outside the Town Center SubArea would better protect ecological resources and open space with public benefits. Such transfers would allow developments in the Town Center to exceed the allocated residential density and commercial capacity, since it would be reducing density and capacity in other parts of the city. In 2011, the city adopted the Town Center Development Regulations. The code allows for TDR credits to be converted and used as bonus residential units or commercial square footage to achieve plan maximum density, as we just learned about two hours ago. This was followed by the adoption of the city's TDR Program through the addition of new city code. The TDR Program includes both internal and external sending sites with transfers to the city's Town Center SubArea. The initial city TDR Program gave priority to internal transfers through density incentives. Surely, after the creation of the TDR Program, an interlocal agreement with King County and the city was negotiated and executed. Once the agreement was approved, the city amended the TDR Code, which changed the priority of sending sites from internal to external. In 2019, two applications for development were submitted to the city, which included TDR credits from external sending sites as approved through the city's interlocal agreement with King County. The city's TDR Program is described in SDC 2106070, implements a market-based tool to permanently preserve partially developed or undeveloped land with important public benefits, through the private acquisition and the development rights on those lands, and the subsequent transfer of those rights to lands more suitable for development. Sending sites identified in the city's TDR Program include areas located in unincorporated King County and within the city boundary. The receiving sites identified in the city's TDR Program is just the Town Center. The city of Sammamish and King County, the city of Sammamish and King County interlocal agreement are, well, I'll refer to as ILA, is part of the city's TDR Program. The ILA authorizes the transfer of TDR credits from unincorporated King County to the Sammamish Town Center SubArea. The purpose of this program is to preserve rural and resource lands deemed important to the city on an ongoing basis, while investing in city amenities. The sending site area identified in the ILA is located adjacent to the city, south of State Route 202. North of southeast is Aquaw Falls City Road, and west of 308th Avenue Southeast. The area is also known as the Emerald Necklace. These external credits are managed by the county, which has adopted policies and regulations and administrative procedures to implement the agreement and to manage the purchase and sale of TDR credits through the use of a TDR Bank. The county bank facilitates the private TDR market by bridging the time gap between willing sellers and buyers of TDR credits. Under the ILA, the county manages up to 75 TDR credits for use in the Town Center receiving site. Of the 75 TDR credits, the city agreed that the first 20 would be used prior to accepting TDR credits from any other sending site, including internal transfers pursuant to the TDR conversion ratios established in the receiving site incentive table. I also want to note that the county program calculates TDR credits based on what I like to call gross density. And I think this is really important when we start talking about policy directives. So what I mean by gross density is that the amount of TDRs that can come from a particular site is based on the total site area, including critical areas and buffers. And this differs from what the city's TDR, in the city TDR Program, which bases it off of what I call net density, which means it's the gross area of a parcel minus the critical areas and associated buffers. You start with that area, and that will help you determine your TDR credits. So it's one big distinction, and this will come up later on in the presentation. So with the interlocal agreement, one TDR credit from an external sending site, again in the Emerald Necklace, will provide a development project in the Town Center A, B, and C zones with an additional 3,560 square feet of commercial space, five bonus units in the A zone, three bonus units in the B zone, and two units in the C zone. To date, 10 external TDR credits have been applied to two applications in the Town Center. And that includes the Southwest Quadrant Project, which is currently under review, and the Brownstone West Subdivision Project, which received preliminary approval back in 2022. I, yeah, I think that is correct. These TDR credits equate to 38 bonus dwelling units in the Town Center A1 and C zones. The TDR, so this is the in-city TDR piece as part of the TDR Program. The TDR Program also provides an incentive process for property owners within the city to preserve lands with a public benefit, and to provide administrative review process to ensure that TDR credits are evaluated and administered in a fair and timely manner. SDC 2106070 identifies sending site areas within the city, qualification requirements, a certification process, restrictions, limitations, and a description of the TDR transfer process. TDR credits are based on net density, meaning the total area of a property minus critical areas and associated buffers are used to calculate the number of TDR credits. The sending sites identified in the code include the Thompson and Inglewood sub-basins, the Erosion Hazard Special District overlay, and the Wetland Management areas. One TDR credit from internal sending sites is determined by the residential zone of the property. So for example, a TDR credit from a sending site that is zoned R1 equates to 7,716 square feet of commercial space, seven bonus units in the B zone, and four bonus units in the TCC zone. And last, is transferring density within the Town Center. The TDR Program and the Town Center Regulations allows the city council to sell 240 residential density units from the Town Center D zone to development in the Town Center A zone to a ratio of one to one. For example, if 10 dwelling units are purchased from the D zone, they may be used to develop 10 units, dwelling units in the A zone. Funds from the sale of the TCD residential density credits can only fund public benefit projects within the Town Center SubArea, such as parks and streets. Developments that purchase TCD residential density credits must also achieve a higher level of design performance than those specifically required in the Town Center Development Regulations. In order to qualify, developments must incorporate at least five of the development features listed on this screen. And I will not be reading all of these. So there are some challenges with the TDR Program that we've learned over the years. First and foremost is the ILA. Under the terms of the ILA, internal city transfers are not allowed until the first 20 external King County transfers have been used. Used, meaning approved as part of a building permit to construct units transferred under TDR credit. So this is a, this is an issue, as we were, we just went through with the Town Center Project. The only way to get to maximum density in the Town Center today, under the current code, is to first use the affordable housing bonus pool, those 344 units. And once those are exhausted, which they are, then developers can turn to TDRs to help them achieve maximum density. But when you have a provision that limits, like this in the TDR, or in the ILA, that the first 20 have to be used as a building permit, that could mean years. And in this case, the two applications that have used the TDRs, which is only 10 at this point, are in the entitlement phase of their project, which means, again, they're years away from getting, getting to that point of a building permit, because they still need to go through further review. And actually, Brownstone West is probably sooner than later. But definitely, when you're looking at development in the mixed-use zones, that can be a challenge. So when developments, and developers are looking at a project in the Town Center, it may not pencil out to only build to allocated density. And so this is why we haven't seen other development applications come in besides AAGES, which is not, obviously, residential density, utilizing residential density, or the Lake Washington School District, which obviously is also not utilizing residential density. So that is a huge challenge for us. But there is an opportunity, and that is what we are looking at doing this year, and that is updating our ILA. Also, the ILA limits external sending site areas to the Emerald Necklace. This is a challenge, because if you can only purchase transferred development rights in the Emerald Necklace, that impacts the cost of those TDRs. So looking at the Emerald Necklace next to a very affluent community like Sammamish, you can imagine the cost of those TDRs are probably more expensive compared to other areas within rural King County. And so there is an opportunity to look at expanding our sending site area to allow for more competitive purchasing of TDRs for use in our Town Center or other subareas. Another challenge is related to the sending sites identified in the city. As I showed on the map, we have four different overlays, and that is limiting in itself. So one of the things we want to look at through the Critical Areas Ordinance Update, and possibly with the comp plan, too, is do we need to maybe reconsider our sending site areas within the city? And what gives us the most opportunity? And then there is our internal sending site areas are only limited to, sorry, our internal receiving site is only limited to the Town Center. And so as we're, again, contemplating and working through our comp plan, we may want to consider other subareas as well and expand that. So I think when I mentioned last meeting with our work plan, TDRs has its tentacles in almost every policy project we are working on. And so we now have a new mascot, that is Tara the TDR Octopus. And this really, again, is to show that when we're talking about TDRs, obviously, it has, immediately has really a lot of impact on what's going on with the Town Center. But we'll also be talking about it with the Comprehensive Plan, the Critical Areas Ordinance. There is an extension with the Transportation Master Plan. But then we have some other policy documents that have been recently adopted, and that includes the Urban Forest Management Plan, the Housing Diversification Toolkit, as well as the Climate Action Plan. So TDRs are, it's a very important conversation, and this is actually influencing our phased approach to updating the program, which I will talk about next. So the phased approach for the TDR Program, really what we're gonna focus on first, and we've been having some initial conversations with King County staff, is focusing on the ILA. And starting to look at removing those barriers. The ILA needs a lot of updating, it has, it's using references to the old code, and there are areas that we need to just clean up. But we really want to remove barriers, and this is gonna be a conversation. The ILA will not be coming to the Planning Commission, because it is an agreement, so that conversation will be happening with the city council, as well as the King County Council. We are aiming to have that work completed by the summer recess for very good reason. Not only do we have a heavy policy project work planned this year, but so does the county. And so there is a joint desire by both county and city staff to really focus on the ILA and get that approved through both councils by the summer break. There's another reason why this is a great idea. That allows all this policy work that we'll be doing in the interim that could actually impact the code updates for the TDR Program. So again, we want to get through with the comp plan, as well as the Town Center Plan and the Critical Areas Ordinance Update. The Transportation Master Plan is an extension of the comp plan, so I grouped those two together. We want to have a really good draft of what those updates are, and that is the Planning Commission. And having your review and recommendation of all of that work before it goes to city council, that would be about the time we start looking at, okay, how does this draft, these draft policy projects look at that point? And starting to look at what that could mean for the TDR Code. So we, as staff, and that would be Phase Two, really wouldn't start doing our internal review and revisions to the TDR Program until September and all the way through the end of the year. And then we would be back in front of Planning Commission in the first quarter of 2025 with our recommended revisions to the TDR Program, again, after all that other work is adopted, fingers crossed, and go through your review in the first quarter and recommendation, and then to the city council in the second quarter with adoption by June of 2025. And so with that, we are looking for some feedback from the Planning Commission with the first three questions there. I did add to this slide, Phase Two and Three considerations as related to other 2024 policy work. This is, and as we're working through that policy work, we'll have some gentle reminders to kind of think about the TDR Program as we're going through that work. reminders to kind of think about the TDR program as we're going through that work. But, you know, how do we integrate affordable, affordability requirements? How do we incentivize multifamily development? We're looking at preserving land with important benefits, critical areas, open space, forested land, and wildlife habitat, and considering how TDR credits are calculated, gross versus net. And these are things, again, we're in a parking lot for right now, but we do want you to think about those, those topics as we're going through the Comp Plan, the Town Center Amendment, as well as the Critical Area Ordinance Update. So that's why that's on that slide, but we'll go right up to the beginning with the Phase 1 feedback, and I will hand it over to our Vice Chair to facilitate that feedback.
Well, lots of information, once again. Ajay has his laid on, so why don't you?
So this is great. Thank you so much. First thing, and this goes back to, it seems pretty much to your question number two, that, you know, we should, we should consider expanding it because without, I don't know how that, without expansion of the boundary, will we try to achieve everything that we achieve? But I have a question about this. What if tomorrow Sound Transit comes and tells that we would like to expand our rail network down to 02? Okay? And now suddenly, one of our receiving, sorry, sending sites is impacted by that. What happens then? Do we go shopping for another sending site? Is that the City of Samamish's responsibility? Is that King County's responsibility? What happens in that case?
Well, I think once everyone recovers from the shock of expanding the system down to 02, I think there will be a lot of adjustments, and that will be a joint effort by the city, the county, to really look at how that impacts our current agreements and policy work. So, yeah, there would definitely be a point of adjustment.
Okay. So given that that's the point of adjustment, do we have anything which is a possible sending site within the City of Samamish itself? Not, not there, but in the core City of Samamish itself? Do we have any sending site? Do we, do we think that, you know, there is, there is this area which is, which you would like to keep as, as green as possible, so we're going to make that as the sending site? The reason I'm asking that is because when you were showing the sending site, I was starting to think of Central Park in New York, and I was like, wow, that looks like a sending site for, for anything. And, and nobody touches that, right? To that, do we have to start thinking of something like that within the City of Samamish? In the core City of Samamish?
Yeah, absolutely. I think how we define sending sites is going to be really important. That could be publicly owned land that we want to preserve for recreation or conservation. You know, we have this whole WUI, the Wildlands Interface Area Overlay, that's really overlaying half of the city, that we may want to take a look at how the internal transfer of development rights program could be utilized to preserve development in, you know, key areas of the city and being very strategic about. So I would say through this process, and as we're working through the Critical Areas Ordinance Update, while we're working through the Comprehensive Plan Update, we, we, we really want to think carefully on those areas we don't want to see developed and where we want to see that development go. So I think a lot of that is up for consideration and conversation through this process.
Okay. That brings me to my last question. You had a picture, in one of the pictures, you had a bobcat looking at it, right? And I thought, okay, if there is a bobcat, and there's a lot of bobcats, and they're, they're here, and if you don't, if you, if you keep working on receiving sites and sending sites and other things, they've, they have no other place to go, they're going to come through the city, they're going to be, they're going to be hit by traffic, there's all those things. So some, so one, somebody's going to say, you know what, we're going to have, we're going to make like a bobcat pathway so that it can, it doesn't have to go through that. And we've had a lot of success in King County doing such things. What if that comes up? Where does that, where, somehow I feel by doing TDRs, we are just talking of parcels and moving left and right and all of those things, and you're not considering the possibility that there's going to be, one of these areas could suddenly change color and become a different one. What happens at that time? Why do we need, why, why are we trying to do this in relation to that?
So we, as part of the Critical Areas Project, we, one of our areas of special focus is habitat corridors in the city, and we're trying to get a handle on, going forward, what is the best practice for us to identify where these corridors are and how do we treat development with regard to preserving certain functions or features on the property? I think that, that one of the other benefits of the TDR program, and again, it, the Tara the Octopus, it, it really percolates into everything we're doing right now. We are seeing a continued pressure to build on property in the city that shouldn't be built on, and unless we can come up with an alternative economic use, we can't deny permit because it's considered to be a taking of property right, and we'd be faced with having to purchase the property. But if we're able to actually fine-tune a TDR program that would allow for a comparable economic use, that we could then end up with property that shouldn't be built on being set in conservation easement and that type of habitat being retained, as opposed to us trying to find a way to force a home on it through a reasonable use exception permit process. So that, that's one example. It also allows for us to, instead of see continued infill throughout the city, we're going to see right-sized infill, but to, to take some of the pressure off and some of the cost of infrastructure, you know, it's quite expensive to have spaghetti lines of roads and pipes, et cetera, running around the city to build and to maintain those, that you can then start to think of a strategically placing infrastructure to support plant growth in specific areas and that cuts down the cost of installation and maintenance of that infrastructure, thereby reducing the cost to ratepayers. So you start to see how it all fits together, and really, the tool where we could take density, we're not talking about adding more density in the neighborhoods, what we're looking at is using the tool to put density where it probably should go, and also at the same time translating that density into the right type of housing at the right level of affordability. So what it does is it allows us to leverage multiple things, achieve the conservation, reduce the amount of infrastructure, get the right types of diverse housing, and get the right level of affordability. And it's a win-win-win if you can make it work. The challenge is fine-tuning it and getting it in place at the right time so we don't miss a development cycle, et cetera.
So Tara will be smart enough to know where to extend her tentacles.
Tara is going to show up on a lot of slides. Well, I'm hoping she'll show up on a lot of slides when it comes to the Comp Plan, Critical Areas, and Town Center as a reminder that you should be thinking about TDRs as you're going through that policy.
And we have that flexibility.
And you have that flexibility, yeah.
Got it, got it. That's great. Thank you so much. Thanks, Jeff.
John?
So I want to kind of follow up on Ajay's theme there. In other words, if it's crafted correctly, we can prioritize, say, steep-solled critical areas on the western side of the city over a flatland lot that actually could be developed for, reasonably developed. So I can see how complicated that's going to be and how the existing ILA creates all sorts of barriers to that. So good luck with your negotiations. The second question I had was, again, around prioritizing. Kelly, you had that long list, I think there were 12 items in there, and you had to fulfill five of them. That was for just internal?
That was just for transferring development rights from the TCD zone in the Town Center to any of the A-zones. What is interesting is that, and something we're going to want to talk about with the Town Center Code Update is, not only are we asking developers to purchase those TDRs, they will have a high value because they are in a very highly developable area of the city, not only to purchase those, but then also to do additional amenities. And when we talk about balancing the trade-offs, that might be something we look at because that's additional, we're asking more of our developers.
Well, the thing that struck me was, it seemed like just the list was sort of random. And as we think about that, prioritizing, say, enhanced commitment to affordable housing over some other public amenity that might be achievable through development agreement. So, you know, I broke them down between housing, climate, infrastructure, amenities, and trying to figure out what that balance is and what's worth more than something else. What are our vision, you know, going back to the city's vision and goals, how do they align with these pieces? Sort of an open question. Again, good luck.
Actually, let me, Suda, would you like to make any comments?
I do have a question. It could be something simple, but Kelly, if we go beyond the Emerald Necklace or within the Emerald Necklace and get those TDRs and move to Samamish, does that mean the map area of Samamish grows? Or is that still King County?
It's all still King County. It would just be those lands in King County where they no longer can be developed, and we would be taking that development and putting it either in the Town Center or potentially in the other sub-areas when that planning occurs, so.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah.
And to answer Ajay's question, I don't think Sound Transit is planning anything, so we're fine, Kelly.
I knew you were reaching to answer that question. Theoretically, yes.
Would you like to make a comment?
Okay. Is any market demand for TDR in the Town Center?
I'm sorry.
Market demand?
Right now, I would say yes, because, again, the only way to get to max, under our current code and under the current scenario, our situation, our existing conditions, the only way to get to maximum density is through TDRs. But the problem is, you can't purchase any TDRs from the ILA because they're all accounted for. STCA has purchased the first 22, and they do have a contract with King County for the remaining 53.
So the answer is yes?
There is a market demand if there were TDRs available under our current conditions in the Town Center, meaning if we look at changing what that looks, changing the incentives, including TDRs, that could be different. But today, yes, there is a demand for.
So that's the demand side. Let's look at the supply side.
Yep.
How much of the Town Center is TDR-friendly? Percentage-wise? 50%, 20%, 80%?
It's all depending on zones. So TDRs can be used in the A, I think they can be, hold on. It's, I would say all the Town Center is TDR-friendly, it's just the incentives within which zone. Sorry, I'm confusing matters. I apologize. Yeah, let me share my screen.
Is that substantial? Is that?
Yeah, I, again, oops, hold on, let me share this real quick. I apologize, my brain might be slowing down as we get along in the night. Bear with me. Yeah, so, can you repeat your question? I want to make sure I'm answering it correctly.
TDR-friendly, how much percentage-wise?
100% of the Town Center is TDR-friendly. Yep. You can use TDRs in any zone within the Town Center.
What do you hear from the developer, from property owners? Do they, are they interested in getting to it?
Yeah, absolutely, especially those developments who missed out on the opportunity to utilize the Affordable Housing Bonus Pool. They're very interested in TDRs.
Is there any concern about equity as far as applying the TDR? That, you know, I can sell it, but somebody else can sell it, so the community look at it, that maybe that's an equity question, isn't it? Yes, no?
Under that scenario, that would be the alternative. So, so really, for, for an internal city, an in-city TDR program, the equity issue would be as if you happened to have a flat lot and you were not eligible to sell your rights and put your lot in conservation, but your neighbor or friend had a lot that was encumbered with slopes or wetlands or something along those lines, and they, they were able to sell it. I don't know that that'd be an equity issue because you could look at it in the inverse, that, that the equity also is that they can't develop their property, but you can, right? Because of constraints. I mean, it all goes, it all goes back to physical attributes in the community, so I don't know that it's, it's so much of an equity issue as it is, just simple, simple, simply based on physical attributes of existing conditions.
Is there any relationship in the city between a TDR and, and the annexation? Is that, is that annexation to our benefit? Because most of the areas that they outside the city.
Can you go to the Emerald Necklace slide? The interesting thing is that the, all of our potential annexation areas happen to fall within the location of where the Emerald Necklace is located. So you, one might argue that, that by, by purchasing credits in those areas as sending sites, that we are ultimately securing the easterly boundary of the city and ensuring the Growth Management Act urban growth boundary will no longer creep any further east.
So the answer is no?
The answer is, they're, they're not directly related, but they are, if you look at the map, spatially related.
So hypothetically, let's say I have a piece of land, and then let's say that I've got a lot, good part of it, let's say 50, 60% of it is wetland. Kelly, in your presentation, you said that, that I can apply for the entire area, including the wetland?
In King County, you can. In the city, you cannot. So the county, the, so what is here in the Emerald Necklace, that, that is all directed by King County code. So that is not our code, that is King County code on how you calculate the number of credits that can, can come from a property. For sending sites within the city boundary, that is directed by our code, and our code says that for a, for the number of TDR credits, you, it is based on what is developable, meaning you don't include the critical areas and their buffers. So it is because, again, we have two jurisdictional boundaries and code-related to those boundaries, it's different. So this is one thing to consider. Should the, should the city continue to base how TDR credits are calculated based on net density, or should we follow the King County model? And what are the pros and cons to doing that? So we would, we would study that and bring that forth as part of a policy direction.
And among all those developments within the Town Center that have already been completed, do we have any that, but is it, was the result of TDR?
No, all of those projects that are today built, they all, well, all of them with the exception of the town homes that are kitty-cornered to us, they received their additional density through the Affordable Housing Bonus Pool, and that's how they reached their maximum density. The Ichigo Development kitty-cornered to us only developed to their allocated density. They, they didn't develop to maximum, so. And none of them used TDRs, again.
And among the neighboring, neighboring cities, do we have a success story as far as using the TDR?
Oh, we sure do. So when it comes to, well, I'll speak to just those cities that currently have an ILA with King County. That includes Normandy Park, Seattle, Bellevue, Issaquah, and Samamish. So the ILA that is most, is the most successful is Seattle, and that is for a whole host of reasons. Building height limitations are no longer there. Concurrenty is also not a limiting factor. The second most successful story, and get ready for this, is Samamish. We have had, again, and that's, you know, thanks to STCA, they purchased those first 22 units of the 75 from the inter-local agreement, and they are utilizing their TDRs as part of the Brownstone West project and their Phase 1 mixed-use development project.
Can I add one thing? So another interesting factor is that Seattle's sending area in King County is much more diffuse and broader. Another- Another issue that results in the TDRs being cheaper, the pricing is less. I think it's $20,000 a TDR in Seattle, and was it $80,000 or $60,000?
$80,000.
$80,000 per TDR for Samamish. So you can see the price differential, and that's why when we raised the slide earlier about expanding the sending sites, that could infu, it could add a whole lot of affordability to the equation.
We need to extend.
Oh, yes.
Because we're past 9:30 already.
I move that we extend at 10 o'clock.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do want to know, all of this information related King County, ILAs between the county and these cities, all of the purchasing of TDRs, the maps, is on the King County webpage, their Transfer Development Rights Program page, which is fantastic. It has a host of information, and we'll be utilizing that as we are looking at the economic impacts and how that relates to, again, our other policy projects this year.
And developers, they purchase them from the county, right?
Mm-hmm. So the county goes out and they purchase these development rights, and then those development rights go into a bank, and so juristic, or so developers can purchase those TDRs and then apply them to their development project in a certain jurisdiction. And there's all sorts of requirements, and it's all different per each ILA.
There is a kickback back to the city, so a financial benefit back to the city that has to be used on certain types of improvements, whether it's open space or park amenities or those types of things. So when the developer buys it, the county gets a majority of the funding, but a certain percentage of that comes back to the city for, for use in the area where the TDR is to be used, so in the town center.
And those are referred to as amenity funds, and it's, it's 25% of the total sales. So, for example, the 20 TDR units, I believe, the STCA purchase came out around 1.6 million, and we received 25% of that. And those funds actually were used to build the Evans Creek Preserve, Phase Two, overlook, over Office Ahali, that parking lot improvement project that happened around 2011, and which yours truly managed that project when I was with the Parks Department. So we utilized those funds to help build that, and that's how those amenity funds are supposed to be used. They're help, they help mitigate the impacts of those development rights coming into the city, because we'll feel the impact, right? So those mitigation, or those amenity funds are to help us preserve open space, build recreational amenities and so forth. So we do get a benefit from that.
Are you planning to update the TDR as part of the complan?
Yes, the TDR program as part of this total work program for '24 and into '25.
Thank you.
I have a question or two. So I think we need to make it clear what the benefits to the city are by having King County, like, you know, Enemclaw's area can be protected, while we put in density. And if I understand or can extrapolate the conversation correctly, it is to allow the density in places where we'd like it to. It would be nice if we could just protect the land in Samamish to get the density where we want to, as opposed to outside of even the Emerald Necklace. I don't know if that's possible in the negotiations with King County, but I guess what I'm saying is we should make sure that, that we have a good, solid win for Samamish in those negotiations, because it doesn't quite feel like it to me right now. And I was actually much more strongly towards that until this kickback, because it's, there is a little bit of benefit there, but weigh that against the amount of development and not getting protection to Samamish's wildlife corridors and so forth, doesn't seem like a great deal on the surface of it. So if that's the way we need to go, we need to be able to explain what the benefit is clearly to the residents of Samamish. I do have one other, this is maybe in the kind of question, but looking at the Emerald Necklace, a lot of that is parkland. And is parkland, could that be TDR-ed, if you will? Because like Soaring Eagles, King County Park, and it's, would they, like, and then what's the benefit? Because it's already kind of green and protected.
Yeah, that's a good question, and one that we are definitely having conversations with the county about, so we hope to bring back answers to that.
Yeah, as opposed to saying, well, we'll just put up a house in the middle of Soaring Eagle, I don't know. Anyways, that's all I had. Any others?
I think the, the one point to that is that when you have additional units to offer, that you get additional leverage in getting the right type of housing and the right level of affordability. So it really becomes that, you know, the teeter-totter from the last presentation, the Balancing Act, right? It's, it's what are we trying to achieve as a community, and how do we balance affordability and housing diversity with these other types of protections that we're talking about and these other goals as a city? And it's, we're going to have to come to a point where we're going to, you know, if we really want to see housing accelerate, affordable housing and diverse housing accelerate, well, we need to help the development community do that. If we don't, we can make a pencil on paper and show how we could accommodate it, but we're not in earnest actually going to see it be built.
Yeah. Well, and that makes sense. The point, though, from a political standpoint, and the, the folks of which there are many, many in Samamish, that don't like to see trees cut down, to say, hey, this is what we're doing. We've got this trade-off. We can save trees or wetlands or corridors, and the trade-off is some of the density in town center and maybe some of the other subareas, so. That's, yeah, that's, as opposed to Enemclaw, you know? Anyways, I think that covers our questions. We should go to public comment.
Well, again, I want to just say in closing on this topic, first of all, thank, thank you all and the public who has joined us tonight online for your patience. These are both pretty, pretty heavy topics with a lot of background and a lot of complexity. And again, my offer still stands. If there are further questions or you would like to discuss this with staff, we are more than happy to host meetings. And then as a result, we can post your questions and our responses during those meetings to the websites so that our community can follow along. So next steps, we are going to the City Council on March 12th with a very similar presentation. We'll be providing your feedback as part of that presentation, so incorporating. And that really is going to help drive not only Phase One on the ILA, but as we're looking forward to Phase Two and Three. So again, thank you all so much for your time tonight. This has been a good session, so next time I'll bring Red Bull.
Well, we had a prep meeting, and thanks for warning me that it could, we could go long. So, I ate a big dinner before. Would you like to make public comment? So we have, we have somebody here who would like to make public comment. Very patiently waiting.
And this time, I'll, I'll say my name and where I'm from. So Carrie Bosworth, Samamish resident, five years. I will try to keep this short. I really enjoyed the meeting. Maybe that's because I had a lot of the background already, so that's helpful. First, I just, you know, I caught Steve on the way out and thanked him for the great presentation tonight, framework, working with them over the last couple of years as a former Planning Commissioner, has just been great. They come with great data, and, you know, I don't think we've met Steve before necessarily, but it was like the same quality as Jeff, and it was just, that's awesome. So thank you. Thank you for laying out the dates. I'll try to be there at those meetings, and I won't be at the open house, so good luck with that. I have plans. Let's see, I'm glad Steve mentioned and acknowledged, you know, our traffic situation, that it's kind of flat, and that we do have school hour issues, and so it was good to get that on the, on the record. I was thinking in terms of visualizing town center, you could make it fun and have Legos, like a board out in the, in the hall, and build the town center in Legos and tear it down, put it back up, so just a thought. Get the community involved. Let's see, I think I'll stop there. Well, I'll finally say, when I read the packet tonight, I was, I was a little worried. It sounded like somehow you were going to propose affordable before any diverse housing, and that obviously isn't going to work. So I'm glad I was here to listen to what you guys had to say, so thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Carrie. Evan, anybody online?
Yep, we have one hand raised. Mr. Stickney, I'm going to go ahead and promote you.
It's Paul Stickney, Samamish. I'll do a little Schwarzenegger, Spanish, yo comprendo. I actually get a lot of everything that's going on, and what you can figure out and can't, and appreciated all the presentations tonight. A few odds and ends, based on some of the things that were said tonight, that can be helpful. I was at the Y meeting for the fundraiser that Carrie was at, and Mike, Commissioner Bresko was at. I asked them, how many members do they have? That was interesting. 50,000. So I don't know how many come per day, but contemplate that traffic as compared to town center use, so it's an interesting thing. The other couple things, Ajay, Samamish hasn't done a supplemental EIS, but King County did. King County did a supplemental EIS of the 1993 Samamish planning area when our city incorporated. So there was a case where a large EIS had a supplement to do our city at incorporation. I'm going to skip a couple of these things. I'm looking at my notes in order of time and for everybody. Okay. I think it would be cool to have a table prepared for east-side arch cities in particular. How many affordable housing units have been created since roughly the year 2000, roughly? And how many were tied to inclusionary zoning? And how many were tied to other means? Because it would help get some context of how likely these programs could achieve certain numbers. And I'm very much looking forward, I know it's not ready yet, but I'm very much looking forward to the market rate relationships of 80% AMI, 50% AMI, and 30% for inclusionary factors. We heard from consultants and my own study that out of 10 units for many cities, one at 80% works, sometimes doing 15% inclusionary does not. So that'll just be interesting. Something else, I'm not a builder, but I've heard mass timber construction has been approved in Washington State since 2018. I don't know other upsides, I don't know other downsides, but I know it can go up to 18 stories, weighs way less than concrete, like a third to a fifth, so it may be interesting to explore going up a little and not having as many structures and impervious surface, more view, more open space, and less crowded, just as an option. Don Jerran has talked about that over the years. Ichijo Townhomes, and this is a shotgun based on, on your meeting, I'm just looking over my notes. Ichijo Townhomes had 75, or 72 units, maybe 75. I believe they had seven or eight affordable housing, so they did their 10%. And said, not with a smile, but with no anger either, I've always been concerned, why in 2008 did the city only put inclusionary at 10% on town center? Why wasn't 10% put on all the subdivisions that have occurred? We've had 2,000 single-family homes built-ish. Why weren't 10% of those affordable? Redmond does that, and I challenged the city on that. So that's the type of housing we need much more of relative to our economic and demographic makeup, but yet it had the inclusionary perspective and single-family housing did not. I've always found that, in my opinion, inappropriate. On the TDR question, my last topic, appreciate discussing the net, and I've got a nuance on net, two or three examples. I don't expect answers, I'm just going to get the examples out there. If a parcel in Samamish can do an internal trade, critical areas comes out, but do all other development regulations apply to net? So if you take tree retention and stormwater requirements and development regs, Phase One and Two, and potential steep slopes and, and massing and grading, all effects of if somebody wanted to development, is that number the TDR credit they get in Samamish, or is it only a critical area reduction in their site? And the last question I have is, there are several properties in Samamish that only reasonable use exceptions would be allowed. Are TDRs created on those parcels at the reasonable use exception level, or do they get more or not? So I guess my real question is, is the net sending site within Samamish truly net? Not just critical area, critical areas, but if somebody came in to do development on that site, at the end of the day, they would end up with what they could do? Is that the number, or is it something else? So anyway, enjoyed the meeting, awful lot to unpack, there's a whole lot more to talk about, but I'll yield my last minute and just wanted to answer some of those things that I knew about. All right. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Paul. Actually, one correction, he said 50,000 members, there's 50,000 visits. It makes a little difference, because it's not, it's not the entire population of Samamish that is a member. So, any, on the upcoming meetings, anything else for staff?
Thank you, because that's a great segue. You are all invited, including the public listening in, so share it with your friends to the open house on February 28th here at City Hall for the Town Center Plan and Development Code Amendment Project. And we, we want a good outcome and have folks attend, so if you could please share with your friends or on your social media and promote the event, we would really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Please bring as much as possible displays and rendering and information drawings and all that, that you get, you get more responses when people see those, those displays.
Yes, and from our development community, we have asked them to please provide renderings and examples of other projects that they have done, so we can not only see what's here in Samamish, but what are the possibilities based on other projects that they've done that could help inspire feedback from our community on this work? So thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful night.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.